All right, let's get started. This is Prashap Patel, Chair of the Finance Committee. It is 7:01. Can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Can I get a second?
Second. Role call. Suresh Bhaktia. You're on line? Okay, Suresh. Peggy Briggs is not here.
Hold on, did you get a yes or no?
I didn't get anything. Suresh? Unmute yourself, Suresh.
Okay, keep going.
Okay. Peggy Briggs is not here. Kathy Kuklo.
I'm here, but the camera won't turn on.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. Eric Daubert.
Present.
John Garofalo. No. Greg Gariello is not here. Amrit Kumar, he's not here, I know. Don Kupka.
Here.
Lindsey List. Thank you, Lindsey. Dee Ortner, here. Parashar Patel.
Present.
Carlin Reed.
Present.
Christine Reynolds.
Here.
Quazi Sudrasaman. No. And Los Vasoff.
Here.
Okay, I would suggest if anybody is coming in late, that they, please, if you're remote, please unmute, and let us know you're here. I can't always see the clock for the time, or anybody who comes in through the door. Thank you.
DM here, this is Suresh.
Thank you, Suresh.
All right, thank you very much. Good evening. My name is Prashap Patel, and I'm Chair of the Finance Committee. Thank you for joining the public hearing tonight. In June 2023, the Select Board approved the dates of the Finance Committee public hearings for the 2024 Annual Town Meeting. Tonight is the second of three Finance Committee public hearings this month to review the articles on the annual town meeting warrant that may have a financial impact on the town. On March 7th, we heard from the town on its proposed fiscal year 25 operating and capital budgets, free cash, and other warrant articles. We also heard about the schools' proposed fiscal year 25 operating and capital budgets. We asked the town and the schools to present their proposed budgets on the same night because their budgets comprise almost all spending from general revenue that will be voted on at town meeting. Over $135 million, as you'll see in a few minutes. This does not include spending for the light plant, water, and other enterprise funds that receive revenue from rates paid by their customers. At tonight's public hearing, the Finance Committee will hear from the Minuteman Regional Technical High School, the Community Preservation Committee, the Concord 2025 Executive Committee, the Board of Assessors, Concord Public Works, and the Solar Implementation Task Force. At the third public hearing on Thursday, March 21st, we'll hear from the town's enterprise funds, including the BD Center, the Light Plant, Water and Sewer, and the Peg Access and Cable Related Fund, which is the town's media division. I encourage everyone to attend these hearings as well. As with all public events, we expect a civil dialogue. Public comment will only be limited to the article or issue being discussed. All speakers must abide by the time limits. All public comments must be made through the chair, and individuals who speak out of order, disrupt the meeting, or prevent others from speaking will be removed. Purpose of the public hearings is for the article sponsors to present and solicit public input on each warrant article. Each article impacts life in Concord for our residents, businesses, town employees, and town visitors. Questions are encouraged, however, please keep in mind that presenters may not be able to answer all the questions this evening. Be assured, though, that your questions and input will be considered as they develop final presentations for annual town meeting. Copies of all public hearing presentation materials and the agendas for each Finance Committee public hearing is included in the Finance Committee packet and will be posted and available on the Annual Town Meeting section of the town's website, along with links to the recordings of each public hearing, which will be posted when made available by the Minuteman Media Network. These public hearings are being recorded on Zoom and will also be available on Minuteman Network's YouTube channel. The public hearings are also being livestreamed on the Minuteman Media's website. I expect presenters to take no more than five to eight minutes. Members of the public should limit their comments to one minute. If you're in the public hearing room, please stand and line up at each microphone. If you're on Zoom, please select the Raise the Hand function. After the Finance Committee closes each public hearing, the committee will meet immediately after in regular session to discuss and possibly vote positions for each warrant article heard during the public hearing. These regular sessions are also open to the public. Very quickly, some other calendar reminders. Don't forget the annual town election is on April 9th, and the annual town meeting will be on Monday, April 29th, at 7:00 p.m. at the Concord Carlisle High School, with subsequent days to follow. Thank you. Let me now start with a brief overview of the budget process and potential spending for the warrants at this year's town meeting. I'll then hand over the podium to a representative from the 250th Celebration Committee to present on Article 13. Let's see, is this going to work? Oh, I'm going to say next slide. So just a few slides, a little bit of a roadmap for those that were not at the last meeting, but, you know, this budget process started last May. We're not going to go through all the steps, but we had numerous meetings with the school committees, town departments, members of the public provided input as both the schools and the town were putting together their budget. Last fall, we set guidelines for the schools and the towns. They continued working on their revised proposals all the way through October, November of last year. And if we go to the next slide, give you a sense we are right in the middle of this process. Through December, we heard presentations, again, from school and town around their capital plans, updated operating plans as well. And we are now basically in the middle of March at the second public hearing. Based on what we hear today, what we heard at the last public hearing, and what we'll hear at Thursday's public hearing, the Finance Committee will take positions on each of the warrant articles. We have a sub-school meeting at the end of March as well to wrap up, and we will be ready at that point to deliver a finance annual report to the town, and that will be made available, I think, in April before town meeting, which will take place at the end of April. So hopefully, that gives you a perspective of the process that we've used and the schools and the town have used to develop the budgets that they are presenting at town meeting. Next slide. So these were the articles that were discussed at last week's meeting. And just a level set, fiscal year 2024, which is the current budget. Best estimate is $120.3 million in total spent, $130.3 million, not 20, 130. .3 million spending that accounts for both the town and the various schools, as well as the benefits. And these are only for operating expenses. So any capital investments are not included in this $130 million. The sum of the proposed warrant articles, as they stand today, is $137.7, basically a $7.4 million increase, which is a 5.71% increase in the total operating budgets. Next slide. So you say, well, what does that mean? Well, if you look at it from a taxpayer's perspective, assuming the assumption's down at the bottom, right? No change in the amount of money Concord gets in grants, state aid. Assuming that there's no new growth in property around town that increases assessed value of such properties, and assuming that this particular homeowner didn't make any changes on their own property, and if they had a tax bill, say, of $10,000, as a result, if all of the warrant articles were to pass at today's number, their tax bill for next year would be $10,571. So if your property tax bill was, say, $20,000, you can double that number and, you know, do the math at $25,000 and $30,000. But hopefully, this gives people a sense of what we're voting on and what the impact will be on people's town, your own taxes. And next slide, I think, is going to just very quickly talk about the capital side of the budget. And so if you take a look at where the town sits today, between the town and schools' current authorized debt, which is a $111.9 million figure, that basically says we, the voters, over the past 15 to 20 years have authorized the town to borrow $111.9 million. We've borrowed actually 62.6 of that, and we have authorization to borrow another 49 million. Most of that 49 was the schools, 41 million. A lot of that is the middle school, so we know a big chunk of that will actually get borrowed. Right? And we have several capital articles that are in the warrant totaling 6.5 million. So we would be adding another 6.5 million, a little bit less than 6%, to the authorized borrowing that we already have. And again, the debt service for most of this will be on top of the numbers you saw in the previous slide. So again, keep that in mind. It's a little challenging at this point to estimate the impact of what we may borrow in the next couple of years, but hopefully, this gives you a perspective of what is in the budget this year. And with that, I think we are done with the overview. These slides are available on FinCom, and they'll be in our meeting packets as well if anybody wants to take a closer look at the numbers. Are we all set? All right. 250th, who's going to be speaking on behalf of 250? Perfect.
Good evening. My name is Gary Clayton, 31 Blackwatch Lane. I'm currently Chair of the Concord 250 Executive Committee. I will briefly introduce this article and then turn it over to my colleague Fred Ryan, provide more explanation and work through the slide deck that we have before you. The 250 Executive Committee was established by the Select Board about two years ago, the purpose of which was to have a group of volunteers within Concord focus on the upcoming celebration of the 250th anniversary of the beginning of the American Revolution in Concord. The expectation, of course, is to have a celebration that involves all the community, that involves a wide range of activities and events culminating April 19th, 2025. But let me emphasize that the timelines for this adventure extend really, and we've already begun implementing aspects of the program and events in 2023. They'll continue through to 2026, certainly in celebration of the signing of the Declaration of Independence. But this evening, in particular, we want to focus on April 19th, 2025. This event, in Concord, of course, is of note, but this coming event in 2025 will have an interest and extend way beyond Concord. It will have regional, statewide, and national attention and significance and media attention. As a result, there will be many, many more people, we anticipate, coming to visit Concord. That's a good thing, but it also brings certain responsibilities and obligations on our part on how we manage that. And this evening, we want to talk about what that means in terms of public safety. The budget that we have to work with, that the town manager and Select Board authorized for these celebrations, totaled $700,000. Most of those funds, actually, we've learned based on our work to date, will need to be devoted to public safety. But we also realize that, given the nature of the event, the scope of events, that we will likely need additional funding, which is what we are presenting under Article 13, in the amount of $350,000. Again, this is going to be an event of national significance. Remindful of the calendar that unfolds before us in 2024 with the national presidential election in November, presidential inauguration in 2025, which brings us to April 19th. There are a number of important secular and religious holidays that fall at that same time, including Saturday, April 19th, where we propose, in coordination with surrounding towns and the National Park Service, to have the parade and ceremonies here in Concord. The following Sunday, the following day is Easter, and Monday is Marathon Monday. So without taking any more time, I'll ask Fred Ryan, who's currently the Chair of our Public Safety Subcommittee, to explain why additional funds for this particular need at this time. Fred.
Thank you, Mr. Clayton. Mr. Chair, members of the FinCom, thank you for having me. Gary, we have a number of other members of the committee here with us tonight, including our co-chair, Rob Monroe, and our Finance Chairperson, Rick Laufman, and many others. Thank you for being here. So again, Fred Ryan, Chair of the Public Safety Committee. We have begun the complex planning process to plan the public safety around the events of April 19th, 2025. And as Gary said, that will be on Saturday as opposed to traditionally, when it's traditionally held on Monday. In terms of planning, we've had to make a number of assumptions leading up to these events. Obviously, we're expecting a large number of spectators, participants, and the potential for demonstrators, and more importantly, counter-demonstrators. And we have to plan accordingly. The venue is to be open to the public and very difficult to secure. We're using a model similar to which is used for public safety planning around the Boston Marathon. The marathon is a linear event covering multiple jurisdictions, approximately six municipalities for the marathon. And here, we'll have, obviously, Concord, Lincoln, Lexington, Arlington, and the Minuteman National Historic Park. In 1975, our town of Concord attempted to control the crowds to 120,000 spectators, and the National Park Service estimates that it was a little bit greater than that. As Gary pointed out, we do expect dignitaries, about 50 have been invited. And, you know, back to the demonstrations, we don't know what the political climate will bring next year, and we need to plan for all threats and risks that may come our way. Next slide. I don't have to do that, right? Anthony, I can do it myself. The big day, you know, I pointed out, April 19th, Saturday, you know, public safety really ramps up many days in advance of Saturday. I know Public Works Director and his team, Fire Chief, Police Chief, and others will go operational likely on Thursday and have their staff fully deployed from Thursday right through the weekend until Monday. Keeping in mind, let me think about it. You know, for Public Works, preparing the parade route, setting up the reviewing stands, and all the work that goes into just logistics around holding a major celebration such as that, in advance of the celebration, leading up to it, and then during the celebration, and then following the celebration, demobilizing and cleaning up from the celebration. So there's a lot of work before, during, and after. This is the big day. You know, we've been reading up a lot on what occurred in 1975, and crowds arrived the day before along the parade route, and the word on the street was if you didn't have a spot on the parade route by 2:00 a.m., then you would be out of luck. So again, we need to plan accordingly. In terms of funding public safety, just quickly on what's known as the Special Event Assessment Rating, a SEER rating. This comes through the Federal Department of Homeland Security. There has been some chatter in the community about, you know, hopes that that might bring large sums of money. We want to be abundantly clear to the Finance Committee and to town meeting that while we would welcome any federal assistance from a SEER rating, it does not come with financial support. It comes with subject matter expertise and federal employees, but it would not bring funds to help our local public safety. The last time there was a SEER Level 1 in Massachusetts was following the tragic marathon bombings the year after that marathon. Was it was a SEER Level 1? You know, if the president, sitting president at the time of our celebrations were to come, we would expect a SEER rating probably around a 3 or a 2. And it remains to be seen as to whether the Department of Homeland Security will look at the whole weekend, you know, the celebration of the 250th along with the marathon as sort of one SEER event for the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So in terms of planning, just briefly, you know, I want to really drive home to the Finance Committee, members of the community, and town meeting, really the scope and complexity of the planning, right? In 1975, each of the jurisdictions operated in its own silo and developed its own incident action plan. And I'm always getting the hook. And sorry to be long-winded. And so this just illustrates, you know, the complexity of the planning and what will go into it. This breaks down the various planning sub-working groups that will develop individual plans within each of those functional areas of responsibility and report up to the Unified Coordination Center. I think that illustrates the complexity and the importance that we're bringing to this, to the task at hand. In terms of the budget, you can see Public Works. You know, and again, when we talk about public safety, it's all the townside assets and resources. Police, Fire, Public Works, Public Health, and all of our important municipal workers lending to develop a plan. The budget speaks for itself. Bottom right-hand corner, $725,000 in total for public safety for the celebrations of 2025. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. I know you had a number of questions from last Thursday from the Finance Committee, but let me see if any questions are coming in from the Finance Committee today. Chris?
Thanks, Parashar. In terms of, last week, we got the answer to the question of sources that we have currently. So there was $500,000 from ARPA, $200,000 from a grant, and then we're asking for $350 from free cash. So that would be $1,050,000. And there's another $125,000 over in CPC for some trees. So that brings us to $1,175,000. If 725 of that is used for public safety, which is what this presentation is about, that would leave you with another $300,000 or $400,000. What does, how is that used?
The difference is used for several important categories of work: communications, the parade and ceremony itself, hospitality, and program events and activities. And you mentioned the CPC requests that we've made, which are clearly Concord tax dollars in large part. I'm treating those as a separate budget item, which will obviously be reviewed and acted upon by town meeting as a separate motion.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Any questions from the public? And on Zoom, Anthony, do we have any folks?
We have no hands, Greg.
All right. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Yes. Are you presenting Article 15? Sorry? Well, we'll move on to the next article. Okay, yep.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can indeed. Good?
Great, okay. All right, let's see. Whoops, this is flat. Okay. All right, so I'm presenting the, my name is Brendan Comesa. I'm from 30 Davis Court. I'm the Chair of the Board of Assessors of the town of Concord. I'm here to present the senior means-tested property exemption. The town previously approved the senior means-tested property exemption in 2019 as a three-year term, and it expired in 2021. Previously, the Board of Assessors was funding the senior means property tax exemption via the overlay account. But we're, since then, but it was approved last year, I think, or maybe it was two years ago at the town meeting. And we're hoping it'll go before the town meeting again. It needs to go before the town meeting again, this time to be permanently put in place. It was in place previously, but it wasn't a state law yet. But Governor Healy recently signed the law in 2022 as a state law, and so now we need to approve it again at the town meeting. This is a property tax shift. I don't, I think, is a net zero impact on the budget, although it does shift some of the burden to people with more assets. Unlike the other, unlike the residential exemption, this one does, is based off of total assets held by the applicants. I believe the threshold was around $200,000 last time we approved it. So anything below, anyone with less than $200,000 in assets and above age 65 was able to apply. So I just have a short presentation. That's pretty much all I have. So if you have any questions, please feel free to ask.
Thank you. Quick question. Based on the current level and making certain assumptions about how many have applied in the past and in the future, can you share an estimate of what the impact is on the property tax overall amount that gets exempted?
I can't give the current quote, but I can give you a, last time we approved it, it was not a significant shift. It was maybe, it was maybe like $20 on the tax burden for the people who didn't receive the application. And it did significantly help the people who received the application and relieving their burden of taxes.
Yeah, thank you. Meredith, can you answer that question? Because I'm not sure I understood that answer. Can we promote her? And while you're being promoted, I guess what I'm getting at is, for the sake of an example, if $5 million is exempt, that $5 million presumably, as mentioned earlier, gets shifted to the rest of the taxpayers. I'm just curious what that total number is. We know the rough tax basis, but I'm curious what the total.
So 34 people qualify, and it shifted it a penny. It changed it a penny. I don't have the exact number, but it changed it a penny. I can get back with you with that exact financial number. It wasn't much.
That would be good, and my clerk is telling me you've got to identify yourself for the public record.
My name is Meredith Stone. I'm the town assessor.
Great, thank you, Meredith. And yes, if you can get back to us before Thursday's meeting, it would be helpful to provide some context as to what the total dollar amount is on an annual basis. Thank you.
Yes, it will.
Chris, you had a question?
That was my question.
That was your question. Anybody else? Carlin?
Can you tell me why you want this exemption to be permanent instead of renewable every three years?
It should be permanent because it helps the seniors, people that are in need. And anybody in need that needs to want to stay in Concord and stay in their home would be desirable. I think the town would feel that way for them. And that's why we'd want to make it permanent.[1768.92]
Go ahead. For this renewal, it's the same, same exact details, same eligibility criteria?
So every year, we can change the assets and limitations in a local adoption way. So we had 250,000 was the assets last year, and this year was 275. We did increase it a little bit.
Okay. And you said 34 taxpayers were eligible for this last year? Can you?
Yes, they qualified in '14.
Can you tell us?
37 last year and 34 this year.
Okay. Can you tell us how many applied?
I believe there was 40.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, good. Anybody else? Any questions or comments from the public? Name, rank, and serial number.
Hi. Joe Lauren, 134 Southfield Road. I'm just wondering how this does, is this coordinated in any way with the RTE? You mentioned that, Brendan. Are these coordinated? Is there overlap? Or do they, you know, how do they work together, this exemption and the RTE?
The RTE is based totally on property value. This is based on total assets held by the individual. It's much more focused on people, and they also have to be over 65. There's a lot more focus on seniors with limited means. The residential exemption is based purely on the asset value of the house, and you have to be a primary owner of the house. So there's a lot more focus on the actual financial means of the individuals.
So I think maybe the question was a little bit more about, can an individual apply for and get both of them?
Yes.
Sorry, Derek?
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mary Hartman, 16 Concord Green member of the Select Board, speaking for myself. I mean, you mentioned, Meredith, that you increased the asset limit from 250 to 275, and yet the number of people who qualified went down. I'm wondering, can you also adjust the income, to raise the income, to reflect cost of living increases? Or what flexibility do we have as far as income limits?
We do, we do have an opportunity to increase the income. It would have to be board approval.
So it'd just be the assessors that would approve that?
Yes.
Great, thank you.
All right. I don't see any questions in the room. Anybody online, if you'd like to ask a question, please raise your hand so we can elevate you. And that also applies to, do Surish and Kathy have to raise their hands, or can they just speak directly?
They can either speak directly.
Great. Okay. I don't, oh, do we have a question?
Andy Putrick, does he have a question? Do you agree with him?
So there's one other question from Andy, it's Andy Putrick. Must taxpayers reapply each year for this?
Yes, for their income and assets change, and they have to qualify.
Okay. Go ahead.
Hi, Meredith. Don Kupka from FinCom here. Wondering if there are any, since the limits are set by the assessors, the Board of Assessors, are there any boundaries on those limits? Could we find ourselves at some point with, you know, hundreds or thousands of people qualifying? Thanks.
No, we, we make sure that we vet and follow statutes and state laws, and we only go up to, for 275, it's not much of an asset to be able to stay within those limits.
Thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? All right. Thank you very much, Brendan. And Meredith, we will now move to the next article, which is Article 17. Alan, are you up?
Good evening, Alan Cathcart, Director of Concord Public Works. If I just say slide forward, is that, I don't have the controller. Okay, good evening. Article 17, Nagog Pond Improvements and PFOS Mitigation. We're looking for appropriation of $50 million borrowing. This is to allow us to proceed with the design and construction of the Nagog Pond water, surface water treatment facility and related infrastructure, as well as PFOS treatment at that facility, which is relatively new, need, as well as several groundwater wells. Hold on, it just, okay, there we go. Great. Okay, so if you aren't familiar with PFOS, that's a major driver of this borrowing request. PFOS are a family of man-made chemicals that are, they contain carbon and fluoride, as well as some other elements, compounds that are ubiquitous. They're called forever chemicals. More and more, we're reading about them and learning about them in all sorts of, you know, the environment. They are very resistant. They do not break down. They're chemicals that were manufactured back in the '30s and '40s. They've been used in a lot of fairly common applications, very effectively. They are great for water-resistant retardant materials. You'll see fire protection materials, foams that were used in firefighting. They've been used in outdoor sporting goods. Gore-Tex is a very popular sort of item that they've been used with. They're in food packaging products. They're pretty much everywhere, and in fact, we're identifying it in rainwater. They are so soluble that they are getting picked up in rainwater, and you can find them in the Antarctic. You can find them pretty much everywhere. The real question is the concentration and the impact of that concentration. When it comes to water supply, it's a, considered an emergent contaminant of interest. We are looking at all of our supplies, source supplies, as far as the, you know, looking for detection and presence of these compounds. We have identified them, you know, we have six groundwater wells and one surface water supply, and we have identified them in all of those sources. You know, the question again is the concentration and, you know, what do we need to do about it? A little history is very important for context. When we were first, and Nagog is flagged as sort of, that's the primary need for the borrowing, where back in 2013 is when we started the permitting of a very contentious treatment facility up off the banks of Nagog Pond in Acton. Went through years of permitting review, fairly rigid constraints on the site, but when we started the process, PFOS, well, it was identified as a contaminant of interest. We had done sampling along with the rest of the country, and we found at the time there was no detection in any of our supplies. In essence, that was around 2014. The limits of detection of the equipment that could be used to detect this was not particularly small. There was issues where, you know, the presence at the time, we thought we were okay. We went forward with the design of a full-scale treatment facility. In 2016, EPA identified a health advisory of 70 parts per trillion. I'll, I'll talk about what parts per trillion mean in a second. At that point, again, no flag for the Town of Concord as far as a concern at any of our sources. In 2020, EPA, DEP, that's a state, EPA is a federal regulatory agency, DEP is a state regulatory agency, they, along with a handful of other states across the country, determined that they were not satisfied and concerned with the 70 parts per trillion advisory. They went independent, like California, New Hampshire, Michigan. They all ended up determining their own drinking water standard. It was a pretty significant change in a regulatory approach for such an important and significant contaminant of interest. When they identified a standard of 20, again, Concord, at that point in time, they, DEP established a standard and then decided to have a sampling protocol to find out how ubiquitous is this. I served on a committee at DEP, and I advised, I'm not sure that's how we should go about develop a standard and then look at these levels. Regrettably, I wish they had sort of heeded that, that concern, because as the state started doing detection through a routine process at much lower limits, we started finding it everywhere. You can see Concord sampling in 2021. That's when we identified standards or limits of around under 10 parts per trillion. Again, at the time, we thought we were okay. And then EPA decided in 2022 that it was going to start looking at a new standard and dropping it down to four parts per trillion. We're waiting literally any day for that standard to be promulgated. When you're talking about standards of four parts per trillion, you're talking about, in essence, for context, one drop in a bucket is what we call a part per million, and that's sort of what we've conventionally tested for with a lot of contaminants of interest. When you talk about a part per billion, that's one drop in an Olympic-sized swimming pool. One part per billion is considered significant, and a lot of contaminants of volatile organics, synthetic organics are monitored and of concern and interest at that level. Parts per trillion is a whole new arena for the regulatory industry, as well as the water supply and wastewater and food industry everywhere. One part per trillion is one drop within 20 Olympic-sized swimming pools. So it just tells you, it's a whole new kind of foray into a regulatory, a contaminant of interest, and it has an impact on Concord as well as a lot of communities around us. Two of our groundwater sources, we are concerned that we're going to be exceeding that standard once it's promulgated. We anticipate possibly three years to get into compliance. We have Nagog Pond, which we know is single digits of PFOS, but we need to design a facility. We had to go back to our design and look at adapting it to include PFOS, so we're in the process of looking at that as we speak. The impact on our ratepayers, and there was a question the other night or comment as far as, you know, how does the borrowing fit into what we consider a pretty healthy cash reserve? And if you can see from this chart, and I apologize, the article is not 41, it is 17. That's just a typo.
Alan, you've got two minutes.
We are looking at the implementation of Nagog and two groundwater supplies over the next three to five years, and we're going to be drawing both from our cash reserve, which is healthy now, well over $10 million. You can see the blue bar chart, that's what we have in reserve. The red is going to be the capital plan over the 10 years, and the green is the debt expense, and that's how we anticipate covering those costs.
All right. Thank you very much. Let me see if there are questions from the committee. I know there's a couple of questions on Zoom. For those of you on Zoom, raise your hands, and we will promote you one at a time. Don, and then Carlin, and then Eric and Chris. Yeah, and then we'll go to Zoom.
Thank you, Alan. Alan, the, this article is to borrow $50 million for improvements at Nagog Pond, right? So what of the, you just mentioned that the, on that last slide you showed, that that included two other water sources, and we have six other water sources. Do you have a, an overall master plan, and is there something we should be anticipating over the next several years?
Yes, so the, the plan is for immediate compliance with what we anticipate as a new standard that hasn't been released. We anticipate that literally any day, any week, as before. Nagog needs to be complete design and constructed for surface water filtration as well as PFOS now. Then we have Hugh Cargill and Second Division that are presently at or just above the anticipated standard. The other sources of supply are just below that standard, but the challenge is, when you talk about four drops in 20 swimming pools, it's very, we're on the edge. It's, we're at the limit of detection for the ability to monitor this, and we're concerned that there is a goal of zero for PFOS. And if that happens, then we need to plan for in the five to 10-year plan, possibly more treatment. At this point, that's on our radar, but the $50 million is to take us through what we know is going to be a need in the next three to five years.
So does this $50 million cover the three sources?
It does.
Okay. Thanks.
The parts per trillion for the Second Division well and the Hugh Cargill wellfield, what are the numbers?
They, they fluctuate. So we're on a sampling schedule where we've collected a number of samples, but plus or minus, they're in the five, six, seven range.
Thank you. Eric?
So $50 million, I mean, this is a very significant dollar amount. How does, how does this break out across the projects you've outlined? Do you have a, of the $50 million, what goes to Nagog, what goes to the other sites, what goes to infrastructure?
It's a little premature to do this. What we've found with, with Nagog is every time we anticipate a schedule, another upset occurs, whether it's been permitting, whether it's been changes in sites. We had to change a site from where it was originally intended to near the Rotary, and the PFOS was the latest change. We are looking at somewhere in the 30, $35 million range for that facility. When we first started, it was under 10. You know, that was over 10 years ago. And the cost for Second Division and Hugh Cargill are approximately somewhere in the $5 to $10 million. We just haven't gone through the preliminary design yet, but that's what we're seeing out there in the industry.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah. How good's the number, Alan?
How good is the number? I wouldn't say, I'd say it's good enough, but what we really, where we're concerned is when you go to borrow money or you try to get on the state, the state revolving fund, that's where you can get funds that either are low interest, no interest, possibly principal forgiveness. You have to be ahead of the schedule to get on the list. We qualified for a state revolving fund for $28 million last year, but given what happened with the schedule, we couldn't take advantage of it. But they expect you to have the money through a town meeting authorized for you to actually apply, and the schedule would allow us to meet their calendar. But one thing with the borrowing, if we didn't spend it, we're not borrowing it. We're not going out tomorrow to borrow $50 million. We will borrow it as it's needed and work with the Finance Director on kind of when and how.
Thank you.
So, but the answer to the question, plus or minus 5%, 10% in terms of how good the number is?
I'd say 25%.
Plus or minus 25%?
At this point, that's a very typical kind of engineering contingency.
Okay. Now just be clear. All right, Lois, let me just, hold on, let me just see if Surish and Kathy on Zoom have any questions, and then we'll come back to Lois. I don't hear any. Go ahead.
Alan, I think you answered my question, which was whether or not we were going to borrow this all at once, and we're not. We're going to stagger the borrowing.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Great. I think members of the public now, and I have one person on Zoom. Anthony, do you want to promote them?
Do you want to start with me, or you'll start with the Zoom?
No, I'm going to start with the Zoom person. Are they all set? So Pamela, can you name rank and serial number, please?
Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. Thank you very much. I know that artificial turf is a major source of PFOS, leaching out from the grass, the artificial grass itself, as well as the tire stuff below. Do we have a, any indication of how much of that is going into the groundwater around the high school? And can we encourage? I think members of the public now, and I have one person on Zoom. Anthony, do you want to promote them?
Do you want to start with me or you'll start with the Zoom?
No, I'm going to start with the Zoom person. Are they all set? So Pamela, can you name rank and serial number, please?
Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. Thank you very much. I know that artificial turf is a major source of PFAS, leaching out from the grass, the artificial grass itself, as well as the tire stuff below. Do we have a, any indication of how much of that is going into the groundwater around the high school? And can we encourage removal and replacement of actual turf instead of artificial turf instead of spending the money to replace it?
So I don't think that question is on point for the article. So Pamela, if you want to send a separate email to Alan, I'm sure he'd be happy to reply directly to that question because that's not.
Well, how much has it been measured, the PFAS coming directly from that?
So yes or no question?
I'm not aware, having been measured.
Okay. Thank you. In the room.
Good evening. I'm Kim Castens, 294 Pope Road, writing for the Acton Exchange. So I have two questions. So one of the, part of the work is to install an associated transmission line along Route 2A. And so I'm interested in how that bears on the impact on the revenue for the department. In particular, are you planning to stop selling water to the customers in Acton along Great Road?
It's a great reminder of the permitting challenges we had, you know, several years ago in Acton. It was a bit of a, we're trying to work with Acton. There was a discussion on continued service or not along 2A. The challenge was Concord even going to realize its investment in Nagog at the time. I think it's too early to tell what the final outcome will be. The transmission is part of connecting Nagog to the new site in Concord. We have reached out to Acton. We actually talked with the town manager and staff recently on sort of opportunities where there might be a way of partnering where it makes sense, but it's premature for me to really say anything more than that.
Okay. Thank you. One more question. So this has to do with the cost benefit of the proposed work. So it says, these investments will be required to maintain the town's ability to utilize Nagog Pond as reliable, high-quality water supply capable of providing the town of Concord in excess of 1 million gallons of drinking water per day. So I'm asking about the $1 million of, 1 million gallons of drinking water per day. As you know, the safe yield for Nagog Pond is considerably below that, 1.68 million gallons per day. If there's no releases, then one can expect that releases might be required to protect the cold water fishery downstream from the pond. So I'm wondering about, you know, whether or not the benefit is really at the 1 million gallons per day as promised in the article.
I guess I'm curious, this isn't about the PFAS improvements, right?
No, no, this is about Nagog. This is about the 1 million gallons per day.
So, but I don't know that it's directly related to the $50 million. So can we just have a separate email conversation, Alan? And I'm sure.
But let me just say why I think it is related. It's related to how, what you're buying for your $50 million. So in other words, will you get a million dollars, a million gallons per day, or will you get half as much as, as promised? So that, that is a cost benefit question.
Very quickly, Alan, we don't, I don't want to divert too much yet.
Very quickly, it'll give us a lot of flexibility, up to 1.5 million gallons a day, and as low as a half a million gallons a day on average. So that's sort of how we're looking at it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Carmen?
Good evening, Carmen Reese. I'm 52 Devon Street, town moderator, just speaking for myself, though. So I have three questions, Alan. The first is, what is the technology that you're looking at? Are you looking at reverse osmosis or charcoal filtering or both? The second is, what will, PFAS don't go away, right? You take it out of the water and then you have to do something with it. So my question is, where's it going to go and how is the town protected against consequences from wherever it goes? And the third question is, we're talking capital under this article, but there'll be O and M associated with this PFAS mitigation exercise, and I'm wondering if you have cost estimates on that. Thanks.
All great questions. So first, the technology, granular activated carbon or GAC or resins are the, what I call state-of-the-art. They're not really state-of-the-art treatment, but they are, they are effective as far as removing PFAS from the treatment stream. Then those materials are bound. They have to be shipped out to be disposed or incinerated, reconditioned, so you get the carbon or resin back. It's one of the dilemmas of this PFAS debacle, I would call it, where we're removing it from one state, put into another. It's, I call it the cat in the hat syndrome. It's just going to go from one source to another. So that's a real challenge. We're hoping technology, because of the cost to the industry, we see technologies are being developed as we speak. If we can hold out, and that might be for some of the future wells that we need to, we might be able to take advantage of lesser cost alternatives, but it's not ideal, and the operating costs are going to increase, and we're still trying to get our arms around as far as what that impact will be. But I will be clear, our five to 10 million, five to 10-year plan, we're looking at 50 to 100 million dollars of needs. We're budgeting right now at the 50. At that point, we're probably doubling rates over the next 10 years. At 100 million, it would probably be, you know, increases from, say, $700 of an average resident to maybe 1,400, 1,500 to maybe 1,800 over 10 years. And then, I'm sorry, there was one other, was, what was it?
O and M.
Yeah, the O and M, which I talked about, that will be sort of embedded into our rate structure. We will be going up 12 and 1/2% at least this year on the water rates.
Okay. So we have one question online, so let me get to that question. Matt, do you want to go ahead?
Sure. Matt Johnson, 21 Winthrop Street. I just recall an old commercial that Triumph had about collision ratings for their cars, and it showed the car heading for a big wall. And it said, but you know, the better thing is just to avoid the wall, and then it, you know, steered around it. And I was just wondering, for Concord, we were doing discussions at one point about joining the MWRA, in effect, take our water system off the table. And so I just wondered if that is still something that's on the table to potentially look at. I also have a second question, though, which is about the sheer liability of this. Concord's in an enviable position of having the assets to be able to address this, but it seems like many communities around the U.S. would not have the wherewithal to be able to mitigate this problem. And there certainly are organizations that must be held responsible in some way. Can you describe a little bit about, just, you know, Concord, we're going ahead $50 million, but, you know, do we really have to do this? And can, I mean, does it make sense for us to do it relative to other communities can't and won't and will be looking for other approaches?
So Alan, the first question?
MWRA, regional water, I would like to say I helped spearhead.
Well, Alan, let me just say yes or no, or we're still considering it? And then let's move on because we don't.
Correct. We are still considering MWRA water, but the soonest we could get it would probably be 10 to 20 years, but we will be working towards that.
And the second question around chasing after liability?
It's feasibility, practicality, and liability. There's a lot in the works. I think on one hand, Concord has joined a coalition to take action against some of the manufacturers for some return on that potential impact, but it will be pennies on the dollar if that. We know that, but we have engaged in that.
Great. Thank you.
Mark Howell, member of the board of select, the select board, speaking for myself. Question, I know we've spent a lot of time and effort and money on Nagog and the water treatment facility there over the past years, including the intake type. I think from the perspective of presenting this at town meeting, I understand that PFAS is the next really large and scary problem, but I think this is also, you know, 60% of this particular borrowing authorization is towards a treatment, water treatment plant that we've discussed before in the past. And I think it's important to start with that context and remind town meeting, how much have we spent on this already? How much have we spent on the intake facility? Where are we in the design process of this, of this facility? How much has that design process been impacted by this revelation that we now need to treat water for this additional set of contaminants? I just, walking in here, I feel like some of that, pardon the pun, has trickled out, but I think that what we really need to do is, is make sure that we're looking at this in adequate context rather than sort of driving it in the middle of the story that PFAS has changed everything. I would also go back to and seek a little more clarification on if this is not borrowing on the general capital market, but rather borrowing from some state fund which is at preferred interest rates, I think that's also something that would be of interest to town meeting. You know, that, that number is half what we debated through three town meetings over the middle school on. So I don't think we can be in any way, shape, or form, you know, anything else other than extremely serious about these kinds of dollar amounts, especially when they're, when they're as loosely defined as they already are. So I just make those suggestions, and if you can maybe just answer the specifics about what we've already spent on Nagog and how that money's been spent, that would be very interesting at this point. Thank you.
30 seconds on how much we've spent.
Okay. We have spent somewhere on the, I think it's $7, $8 million, inclusive of intake work, inclusive of design work, inclusive of legal support at this point.
Dean Vanfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I am the chair of the solar implementation task force, but I'm just speaking for myself. Excuse me. Following up on the question Carmen asked about the technology involved, we're basically getting to the point where we're now, in effect, engineering the water that's delivered to the customer. What else will be removed and, you know, in the process, you know, are there any side effects to the kind of water that's being delivered today? If you have to go down to this trillionth of a part level, are we going to be losing the other minerals and other things that would normally be delivered?
On the groundwater supplies, it'll be enhanced treatment that we haven't had before. So it's just improved quality. And as far as Nagog, as Mark alluded to, we are grossly inadequate with our treatment today. We need to, we don't have surface water treatment at that facility. We're literally 40 years behind. So the treatment we're going to do, this is going to be polishing at the end of a fairly elaborate dissolved air flotation system, which will really improve quality for the town.
Okay. Thank you. Another question. We have our online. Got you.
Joe Lauren, Southfield Road. Just, you know, I don't really know a lot about this topic. It sounds very scary, though, when you bring it up, and it sounds like, yes, we have to spend the money because this sounds very scary. My question is, if you look at the EPA and then the state changing their regulations on this, what, what does it say about the 70 parts per million or the 10 parts per trillion? What do you have to do about it? It sounds scary, but does the law say what we should do about it?
Yes. So the town of Wayland, two years ago, found themselves sampling and exceeding the 20 parts per trillion. They went to serve bottled water to their community immediately. It was a knee jerk, but they had to because it was a new standard. You can't play with the drinking water standard. What's concerning is we're going from parts per trillion, like eight or nine or seven parts per trillion, down to less than four. That's what we need to do. The cost is exorbitant. This doesn't make a lot of sense from my perspective. I'm really plugged into this. I'm engaged at a regulatory level nationally. It's a dilemma, and as we heard, other communities are going to be challenged with the same thing, but we really don't have an option. And we heard the concern about PFAS at the playing field. That would be nothing like when it hits the general public, that it's now a standard. Why aren't we meeting it?
So Alan, to be very blunt and on point, if we do nothing, what are the consequences? Aside from our health? I'm just curious. That I think is a question.
No, I think that's part of it.
So that's the question. So I understand what Wayland.
We would exceed a standard. We'd have to provide notice to people. We'd probably be informed by the regulators that we need to provide an alternative source of water, something like bottled water to everybody. This is, it's absurd.
Okay. I guess that was, my question is, do we have a legal obligation? And again, I'm not trying to downplay that this could be scary, but do we have, what's our legal obligation to do this? And then just made me think, do we exceed the standards in any other way?
We don't exceed any Safe Drinking Water Act standard in any other parameter. And these are all great questions. I wish I had the answers to them all.
Yeah. I get it. All right. Thanks.
And online we have somebody speaking, and then Diane will be the last question on this topic. Do we have anybody online? Andy, you're muted right now, so please unmute yourself and go ahead and ask a question.
I can do that. These webinars are so friendly. I live on 164 Belknap Street, Andy Puckrick. I didn't realize we're talking about PFAS here, but I would like to know what the town is doing. We're testing and monitoring micro and nanoplastics and what, what thoughts we have about mitigation.
So are you talking about the microplastics at Nagog and those other three sources?
No, that's the next contaminant of interest.
Yes.
So it's a good question. That's the next frontier. The regulators are going to be playing catch-up with all communities as well on that one, but it's nanoplastics. We are not monitoring. There's no requirements. They usually go through a requirement for systems to sample across the country. They then look at where it is and the concentrations, and then they're supposed to develop, it's a rule-setting process where they would develop a standard based on, you know, the concentrations and concern for health. On a good note with the nanoplastics is the technology to mitigate that doesn't, appears to be fairly simple, but, you know, just, you know, put on your seatbelt and we'll all wait and find out together because it's the next frontier.
Thank you. Diane, and then this is the last question.
Hi, Diane Proctor, 57 Sudbury Road. Alan, thank you so much. For anybody who thinks this is just a superfluous concern, I would urge you, the Leckerman voters presented at the umbrella Dark Waters, which is a movie, which gives you tremendous technical as well as personal information and background. The library has a copy of the movie. You can get it online. It's worth watching, and it will, it will encourage you to support everything Alan is undertaking. We had experts speak that evening who have given over their scientific expertise to studying all this, and their alarm is such that they have changed their habits in terms of how they clean their teeth and all sorts of things as a result of their research. So I would urge us all to take this seriously. Thank you.
And to be clear, I think members of the finance committee and the public asking questions doesn't necessarily mean folks aren't taking it seriously. So, all right, let's go to the next.
I never meant to suggest we didn't take it seriously. I'm just, there's a lot of people listening to this.
I understand that, but these are questions, legitimate questions that come up. Anthony, next article? Minuteman Regional Tuck, do we have? Nikki's going to come out and, I think she's got a few slides. So for folks in the audience, Nikki presented at Thursday's meeting. So she's got a high-level overview of Concord's share of Minuteman Regional School District proposal. So go right ahead.
Great. Thank you. My name is Nikki Andrade. I'm the business manager at Minuteman. Our interim superintendent, Kevin Mahoney, was unavailable today, but I'm here to give a high-level overview. As Pashar said, I did go in a lot more detail at Thursday's meeting and happy to answer any questions at the end. And our school committee rep, Mr. Steve Ledoux, is on the webinar. I don't know if he wants to say a few words. Perfect.
Steve, you should be able to speak unless you're muted.
Yeah, I know. It's the first time I've ever been on one of these webinars. Excuse me. Sorry about that. I'm Steve Ledoux, 89 Heatsbridge Road. I am the Concord representative to the Minuteman Vocational Regional School District. I've been on the school committee for five years. I'm currently chair of the finance subcommittee and I'm currently chair of the Finance Subcommittee and the Faculty Negotiation Subcommittee, and I have been the vice chair of the school committee as well. And I would just like to present Nikki Andrade. She's our school business manager. This is kind of an anomaly for a budget year, which Nikki will explain to everybody, but we went through several iterations of the budget at our finance committee level before we recommended the full school committee, and we're here to present the budget and thank you for the opportunity, and I'll turn it over to Nikki.
Thank you, Mr. Ledoux. So Concord's preliminary assessment in total is $1.7 million, and without the school building project, which is excluded from Prop 2.5, it's about $1.3 million. Overall, Minuteman budget is around $31.5 million. It's a 3.96% increase from FY '24. And to break that down a little bit further, our operating recommendation is 2.99% over FY '24. Our capital recommendation is a considerable amount up due to our capital stabilization fund recommendation, which I will describe in more detail. And our school building project debt recommendation is just about leveling out now as we've almost borrowed out our entirety for the MSBA project. We're slotted to close around the fall of this year. Overall budget summary, our assessment to all of our member towns is up 0.82% from FY '24. And as Mr. Ledoux mentioned, it is a little bit of an anomaly this year. We had a few items that came in, you know, lower than expected. So we just want to preface this, you know, by letting all the member towns know, certainly not an expectation for future years to have the assessments be this low year to year. Part of the capital stabilization increase is due to our East Building. In the prior fiscal year, we had funded our capital stabilization fund $500,000. This year, we're asking for an increase of $350,000 to $850,000 total. And what we're really looking at is this East Building that's on our campus, currently unoccupied. It used to be occupied by daycares in the past and people that have rented out our facility. You know, we're looking to renovate this building, a portion of the building currently up to 7,000 square foot, and we did have our architect look at that. When our school building was created and built, it was built for 628 students. And when we added our animal science program, which is very popular this year, unfortunately, the building wasn't built for that program. So we're trying to find a permanent space for this program. It's really a thriving program and it's third year, and we really want to do it justice and give all the students in that program a nice space to learn in. We did have our RFI, our Request for Information, sent out this past month. We didn't unfortunately receive any responses, but we were looking for a partner to be able to potentially have a vet clinic onsite on the campus as well. So, you know, right now we are putting together a long-term capital planning committee and -- oh, can we go back? The long-term capital planning committee to kind of see what we're going to do with this building. Unfortunately, it's a deteriorating asset, so we really want to make sure that we, you know, redo the roof and make sure the structure is safe so we don't lose this asset. So, you know, something to note is that, you know, this won't necessarily be adding seats to Minuteman, but it's really giving animal science a permanent home for the program to grow and really do the program justice. So overall, our enrollment tells quite the story with our budget. When the new school really opened in 2019, you can see our red line is the member town, and that enrollment continues to increase every year. The green line is our non-member towns that's continuing to decrease each year. So the past two years, we've accepted, our freshman classes have been fully member town students. This year, we have also accepted 175 member town students. Of all 12 applicants from Concord, all 12 were offered in admission and all 12 accepted. So here you'll see enrollment by town. Concord in particular, the senior and junior class have six students, and you'll see the sophomore class 16 and the freshman class 13. So we very strongly tie our operating budget to our four-year rolling average. So in particular, over the next two years, as the senior classes are graduating lower students and you are now getting an incoming class of 12, your four-year rolling average is going to increase. So that's why you're seeing increases in your member assessments. I cannot control this clicker. So as the enrollment shift continues for our member towns, the out-of-district students are obviously matriculating out, so the juniors and the seniors are the only ones left in Minuteman that are out-of-district students. So as those students leave, we're going to see a decrease in the out-of-district tuition and capital fee that those students pay and the other non-member towns pay. And soon, the member towns' assessments, if all students are member towns, will be shifted over, so there won't be an offset of that revenue anymore. This is what the preliminary assessments look like year to year. So you'll see in particular for Concord, the first two columns are the preliminary assessments year to year. It is, as I mentioned, 1.7 million this year, approximately 1.6 million last year, an increase of 5%, whereas the four-year rolling average has increased approximately 13%. Overall, again, the total member assessments up 0.82% and the total member town enrollment increasing year to year 12.6%. And again, just shows, you know, the drivers of how the enrollment is really driving each This slide addresses a question that was brought up by the Finance Committee on our per pupil expenditures. We did an analysis, in particular, on the per pupil expenditures, and Minuteman is the highest vocational technical school district. The data available on the DESI website is $34,000. And I just wanted to address why that was. So three main reasons looking at that is our teacher salaries. We're third when it comes to vocational technical schools and third when compared to member towns. Concord Carlisle is number one on that list, the highest. We also have very senior and veteran staff, approximately 2/3 of our staff is at the very top step and level. So that contributes a lot to the cost per student. Our special ed costs are very high compared to other vocational schools. We have approximately 40% of our students that are on IEPs, so that special ed costs are higher than expected compared to other vocational schools. In transportation, just due to Minuteman's geographic size and location, we kind of have our member towns really spread out across Massachusetts. When we moved from 16 member towns to just nine, we do have, you know, member towns close, but we have some in Lancaster, in Bolton, in Stowe, and that does add to additional transportation costs just because of the size of our district. And just summarizing, you know, Mr. Ledoux moves the town appropriate $1,732,805 as Concord's assessed share of the funds for the necessary expedient purposes of Minuteman Regional Technical High School for the fiscal year, June 30, 2025.
Thank you, Nikki and Steve. Appreciate that. For those in the audience on Zoom, if you'd like to speak, raise your hand and Anthony will elevate you. In the meantime, I'm looking here and I see Carlin, and why don't we start with Carlin and then we'll see if anybody else has questions.
Thank you. Do I remember correctly hearing that we've got 12 students in the incoming freshman class?
Correct.
With a possible of 15 for a cap? So 15 students is the cap that could apply from Concord?
It's not necessarily a cap, it's a slot allocation. So we do provide a slot allocation to all of our member towns. If, at the point where we have students accept and/or decline and there are more students available for member towns, you could go over your slot allocation, but it is the minimum, I guess, for each town.
And then the other thing was the calculation.
And if I could, Carlin, just to use an example, it's kind of like, I don't want to use the word barbering, but for example, Dover has 10 slots allocated. They typically send one or two kids. So those other slots get allocated amongst the rest of us. So, you know, at some point in time, will we ever be capped? You know, it's really hard to say. A lot of it is going to depend on whether we can expand a little, as Nikki went through, and, you know, and some other financial issues. But, you know, so far, we've been able to, you know, get along. I think one of the difficult things, even though it's a new school, the school was a compromise in terms of the student size. Most of the towns that pulled out wanted a school of about 400 and something kids. The original design, I would think, was over 800. So we ended up somewhere in the middle, and as Nikki has pointed out, it doesn't give us a lot of flexibility for new and innovative programs like animal science. So, you know, it's a lot of moving parts, but, you know, hopefully we'll never get to the point where we can, everybody stuck to their allocation.
Thank you, Steve. One other follow-up question. The calculation that they have of 34,000 per student, is that based on 50 students, which I thought was your expectation for fiscal year '25 from a previous presentation that I saw? Or was it based on 41 students? The calculation, that's it?
The 34,000 is straight from the DESI website. It's actually from 2022. That's their last publicly available document.
But that's based on the entire population, not Concord's population?
It is, yes. Sorry. Yep, correct. Thank you.
Any other questions from the Finance Committee? No? Okay, so members of the public, we have Matt on Zoom. Matt, go ahead.
Hi, I was just interested in--
No, Amy, I know you said it before, but what's your address in case we want to come over?
Matt Johnson, 21 Winter Street. So I just wanted to ask about that renovation project. When I look at the $7 million number and the 7,000 square feet, that adds up to $1,000 per square feet, and, I mean, and compared to, let's say, the middle school that we recently funded, you know, was under $700 per square foot, it seems extraordinarily expensive, and in fact, you know, more expensive than simply building new. I just want to understand the economics of that proposed renovation project.
What I will say--
Matt--
Oh, go ahead.
Go ahead, Nikki, go ahead.
I was going to say the $1,000 per square foot was based on our recent architect, but Steve, if you want to interject with anything, I'm happy to.
I think the other piece is too, because it's animal science, it's veterinary science, you have to think about the cost of the equipment as well, because there's some pretty sophisticated equipment that goes along with that program.
So maybe not an apples-to-apples comparison is what I'm hearing?
Right.
Okay.
And I think that the creation of the capital planning committee will be something that they specifically look at. You know, this is certainly something that needs a lot more detail and thought put out into it if we're not going to be partnering with someone.
Okay. I don't think we have anybody else on Zoom. Is that Brian Anthony?
Suresh.
Oh, Suresh, go ahead.
Just to answer Matt's question, I'm recently working on a project, similar project for addition for a veterinary-sized building, and that's about $1,000 per square foot under construction right now.
Okay, thank you. And Pamela? You're muted, by the way.
There we go. Sorry. Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green. I support the school, but I'm wondering if we would be financially better off to withdraw and pay external tuition for the students that go there?
Nikki, I can address that. Pamela, one of the phenomenon we are finding is that the seven towns that pulled out now have kids that want to get a vocational education, and they can't find any slots anymore. The slots at Minuteman are dwindling. Asabet, the regional school in Westford, nobody has any slots open. So kids that are in a town that don't have access are getting shut out of those programs. And, you know, most, you know, most conventional schools districts aren't set up to offer a lot of these type of programs. Some do, but so that's kind of the downside, is that if you pull out, the kids who are interested in voc ed may not have an opportunity to go anywhere.
But it looked like the outside tuition was sloping way down at Minuteman. Is that--
It's slumping down because all the slots are getting taken by in-district kids.
I see.
That's why it's going down. And that's why it's, you know, in hindsight, some of the towns that pulled out are now, I think, regretting it. We've been approached by both Carlisle and Sudbury to rejoin, and I don't think any of us are that interested in bringing them back. But any rate, that's kind of the phenomenon that's what's going on. It's not just with Minuteman, it's statewide, there's just not enough slots for voc ed.
Thank you, Steve. Going once, going twice. I don't see any raised hands, and I don't see anybody standing up, and Dean is up next. Solar Task Force. Thank you, Nikki.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody.
It's over here. Cool. Simple enough. Okay, thank you. Dean Banfield, 73 Walden Terrace. I'm the chair of the Solar Implementation Task Force, and the article text that I have to put up is kind of a spoiler alert. The warrant that you received in your house had a bigger number in there, and it also said we were going to build some solar sites. So we are scratching the solar systems and we're reducing the number substantially. So I'm going to go through that, but first, we're going to start with, what are we doing here? The Solar Task Force was set up by last year's town meeting by unanimous vote, so thank you for that. It was really designed to create an arc of a plan to get us to our climate action goal of 20 megawatts of solar on town-owned land. We only have seven and a half now. We expect to build one and a half on the CMS site. That'll get us to nine. So we really have 11 more megawatts to build, and that's what the goal of the task force is, to just get a plan in place that gets us there. But the Select Board added this little extra clause that said, "We'd like you to build some momentum," so that's why we're here. Try to get some momentum going. But let's get a plan update first. We looked at where can you build solar and what's it worth? If you look at the 20-year futures of what it's going to cost for the light plant to purchase wholesale electricity, you can see it's going to cost, on average, about 11.21 cents. In a 30-year arc, it's only going to cost 11.45. This is, can you imagine a world in which there's no inflation? Well, the energy market seems to be one of those places where technology, at least in the solar field, is going to cause us a very flat arc of the value of solar energy. So what can we do and what will it cost us to build, and what kind of value can we get out of it? We found that ground-mounted solar, if you build something a half a megawatt and above, like the existing landfill would be about a megawatt and a half, we would be able to do that and get value, get enough energy out of that, that we would be valuing that at about 11.3 cents. And over a 30-year life, if the panels will last that long, it would be about 10.43. So a ground-mounted solar is a practical alternative for the light plant to do within the town. If you look at putting it on rooftops, it's much more expensive. It's much better value for them to go buy it from the grid and pull-- at about 11.3 cents. And over a 30-year life, if the panels will last that long, it would be about 10.43. So a ground-mounted solar is a practical alternative for the light plant to do within the town. If you look at putting it on rooftops, it's much more expensive. It's much better value for them to go buy it from the grid and pull it into the town from large arrays built on potentially arable land, potentially clear-cut land, or windmills on top of mountains. But it's much more prudent for the light plant to buy it on the wholesale market than to build it in-house. And if you're thinking about parking canopies, and why don't we have it over at the high school, it's 40% more even than roof mount to put it on parking canopies. So these are the places where we're thinking on the plan, that we would look to put solar, and this totals only about nine, and we need to get 11. So we're not there, we don't have enough ground space, we don't want to take much arable land, there's one arable spot in there, Amindalea, that would be about two acres of a very large area that has community gardens, it has farmed land, but if we could take about two, two and a half acres of that, we could get about a megawatt in over there. So those are the spots that we're looking at, and some of them we don't even own yet. So that's, it's going to be a challenge to get to our goals. So this is the article we brought. It had three potential solar sites. The former landfill has space, we think we can get about another meg and a half over there. The CCHS campus, we looked to put a half a megawatt over there. And then they came back, the School Committee and Administration came back and said, "Hey, we have this report we did in 2018, said put it on the roof." So we added that to the article. The other pieces of the article that we brought to the warrant included a big industrial-scale battery. That will help, helps the light plant with, you know, an existential risk that they face, and that is that if all the solar that we have in town today is producing at a tremendous amount, and everybody goes on vacation in April, which we're going to in another month during the April school break, and everybody's houses are not consuming electricity, but the sun is out shining, we might get into an existential problem where we have too much energy flowing in the grid, and it could cause blackouts. That's really a serious problem. A battery system would help to draw that off and store it in the battery rather than put the entire system at risk. So there's a protection there that's of existential value. The other pieces of this are that the Massachusetts is trying to help the Greater New England Grid, and when it is at its peak of energy delivery to everybody, they would like to see that some of those peak resources are generated through renewable means. And a battery helps produce clean energy because it's dispatching its energy during a peak moment, and it was produced either by solar or it was bought offline during very low and expensive times. So I'm going to move on from this, but these are some of the real values that a battery system and a control system, which is also critical to the light plant infrastructure, will bring. Just yesterday in the New York Times, we see that we're trying to reduce rising strain on the grids. I just thought I'd throw that in there. That was above the fold in the right-hand column just yesterday. This is what an industrial-scale battery looks like. It looks like a trailer with some doors in it that you can open up and see a whole bunch of little batteries inside each door. This is how a battery would actually help with the problems that the larger grid faces and which the light plant faces. You purchase electricity in the evening or overnight when there's very low demand, you stick it in your battery, and then you flip that little scooped-out area and discharge your battery at a peak moment when the grid is stressed and there's not a lot to go around. So that's the whole value that a battery brings to the table. This is our original cost structure, shows what we were going to, what we estimated for each of the components of this that got us up to our $9.2 million. The control and monitoring system that you see in there for $600,000 for the light plant included studying the light plant's energy flows, getting monitoring equipment in place so they can get detailed data on it, and then buying hardware to automatically charge, discharge, turn on the solar, turn the solar off so that it's not putting stuff on the grid. That was a $600,000 component, and the battery that is still, that we're still looking for this year is down here at the bottom line. Here's the story, and I'm sticking with this. The feasibility studies for all the solar sites are off the table. We haven't gotten any of them underway as of the last time I spoke to Jason at the light plant. We're not going to be moving any of the solar pieces at this year's town meeting. The funding elements that remain are the purchase of the industrial-scale battery. And the management and control system, the light plant is not in a position to go all the way forward to the acquisition of hardware, implementation of the system. So we're going to reduce that funding to a preliminary amount only, and the final motion looks like this. You're down to $100,000 for the control and monitoring preliminary work. The battery is at $2.7 million, which takes a baseline product from Tesla, adds some additional funds that we think we might be able to get down. This is bust-out retail. This does not include any Inflation Reduction Act money. I think I hit the button. There we go. This is how the cash flows will flow to the light plant. So this is in, you know, thousands of dollars per year flowing into their budget. So this, the battery system would produce a net positive cash flow, and it would break even in 13 years. The exact same profile shows up as ratepayer savings. So the ratepayer would, in 2025, would be saving somewhere about $2.50 on their bill, but by the time you get out, you know, 10, 15 years out, you're saving $20 a year on your bill over today's bill, based on the value that the battery can bring to the table. The value to the light plant, this is a question that I got at the previous meeting. The net present value, if we use a 5% discount rate over the 20-year life of the project, is about $3 million for a $2.7 million project. And if you use the weighted average cost of capital, which is about 3.5%, it's about 3.43 million. So that's to answer a question I got at the previous meeting. Funding model here, a bond anticipation note would be required for the full amount to acquire the battery, to get the study underway for the control systems. But then after a year, we would file a tax return, which the light plant does not have to file today, but if we want to get these credits returned to us, we have to file a tax return to get 25% back. And all these numbers that I show you...
Dean, can I get you to get to the last slide, please?
I can do that.
Thank you.
That's the last slide right there. There are no budget impacts on the town's budget, and the ratepayer impacts would be anticipated to be positive throughout the entire project.
Great. Thank you. So it sounds like the savings from the light plant can go to the water company. Can you guys talk to each other, maybe? All right, questions?
Yeah, one quick question, Dean. Maybe I didn't hear this, but can you tell me what the lifetime is for a battery?
The industry tends to think that a lithium-ion technology would probably last about 10 years. Tesla, whose model I'm using here as a plug, guarantees their battery for 20 years. Now, what I suspect they do is, in their maintenance costs, which is about $8,000 a year, they will come and evaluate the individual modules and plug in a new one from time to time to keep the battery up to a certain level. But it also, probably also, I haven't looked at it in detail, but I also believe that it includes a certain level of degradation every year. Our modeling did include 1.5% degradation of the battery every year.
Okay, is that reflected in your chart?
Yes, it is. The 1.5% degradation is included.
Chris?
Yeah. Dean, last time we met, the Light Board had not yet...
We have not met since.
They still have not. When will they meet?
They're the second Wednesday of every month, so they'll be the, whatever, the second Wednesday of April, I'll be in front of them then.
Okay, so they still haven't voted on this article?
They have not. Just to say what I said before, I was before them just last month, and at that time, we thought we might be able to get the roof done on the high school. So I gave them a range, which was $4.5 million, which included the roof of the high school, included the full control system, up to, I think it was $8.5, $9 million, something like that, which was if we could get the, if we could get the landfill done, it was going to be somewhere in the $8 million range. But, so I gave them a range, and at that time, they were still relatively positively inclined, but they could not, of course, because we didn't have the final, which is what we have here today. So they couldn't make a vote on it.
So we have two Finance Committee members that have questions for folks on Zoom. If you have questions, raise your hand, and Anthony will promote you to panelist so you can ask your question. In the meantime, Don and Eric.
Dean, about the battery, is it to be installed interior or exterior, and is the cost of whatever is needed for securing it and conditioning it included?
To answer that question, I'll try, I'll do my best to answer that. Securing it would probably involve some level of fencing or something around it, just to make sure that it's secure. But what you saw in that picture is effectively what it is on the ground. It sits on a concrete pad, it is all contained within an enclosure, which I'm sure has locks on it, but you might want some additional fencing or something else around it.
And follow-up, then, in New England, in the wintertime, batteries aren't as effective as they are in the summertime? Is that...
There is, there is a certain draw that the battery, it seems counterintuitive, but a battery does require a certain electrical energy to keep itself heated and within a temperature-regulated environment. So there, in the winter, that probably gets into some, you know, you had a heat pump that's associated with it.
Thanks.
Eric?
Thank you. Along those lines, who is going to be responsible for ongoing maintenance of keeping it clean and keeping it powered and everything else? Is that the light plant?
It's going to be a light plant situation. There are a variety of models for that, but basically you can go to the manufacturer and get a maintenance contract, just for straight maintenance. But for usage of it, there are also different ones. The control system that we were proposing, the light plant will probably for a year or two at least, outsource that as a service contract to somebody else to charge and discharge the system.
Thank you. Anybody else in the room? Hold on, Finance Committee, Suresh or Kathy, do you guys have any questions? None? Okay, let's start in the room for public comment, and then we'll go to Zoom if we have any. Go ahead, Mary.
Thank you. Mary Harvard, 16 Concord Green, Member of the Select Board, speaking for myself. I'm going to take a risk and ask a stupid question, maybe. We're not generating any incremental solar because we're not doing the high school, we're not doing the landfill. So where's the power being generated that's going to be stored in the battery, and how does that save us money?
Okay. This is a challenge, but I'm doing my best, Mary. Okay. We will use electricity that the light plant either gets from their own solar arrays internally or that they purchase from the wider grid. So it will be charged up with energy that comes from something that's not physically connected to the battery. Let's start there. The way that the battery, so to speak, pays for itself is by reducing our larger impact on the grid. So when the grid is at its peak capacity in the middle of the summer, you remember all the signs that you see every summer that come out and say, "Please turn off your air conditioner, don't charge your car, do all this." That is because the amount of impact we have on those very high-demand days has a huge impact on the light plant's budget. They are assessed by the grid for the max capacity the grid must maintain to keep everybody happy. And so they just allocate that around, and if our piece of that is lower, we are assessed less. And that's how we save money.
Good explanation. Thank you.
I'm Dinos Gonatas, 260 Old Marlborough Road. I also work as a ratepayer advocate, as a consultant, and I'd also like to thank Dean for explaining some of his projects to me, and I hope I don't sound too critical here. I commend him especially on focusing on the lower-cost land-based solar arrays. My questions, though, are about the storage piece. Having worked on energy storage and building power projects, I just don't understand why a storage facility is needed to solve the load-balancing problem between the feeders. Couldn't there be lower-cost switchgear as opposed to going to storage?
There are two pieces to that, Dinos. One is, we're trying to solve that problem, and yes, there are alternatives, but the light plant currently has between one and two years out. They have the potential for changing their substation so that they can push energy, excess energy, out to the wider grid. That's a year to two years away, a battery can get up and running more quickly. The other thing is, the battery, as we've seen by the cash flow model, seems to be something that pays for itself, and it does not seem to be, it doesn't seem to be, you know, a downside risk. To be clear about the model and the numbers we saw, I can go back to that. Let's go back there. Can I get the slide back or me and Matt?
Yeah, I remember the charts, and actually, as a person that's worked with energy financial models, I'm a little skeptical of that because you're projecting into the future 20 years, you only really have a couple of years of visibility, and there are a lot of conditions that can change, not only in the market, but the regulatory picture in terms of the peak shaving benefits that you achieve for the town. As batteries get cheaper with the rollout of a lot of electric cars, now you're competing with a lot of other people that have a much lower cost than you do. So that's why I'm really concerned about that piece of the model. So I don't want to criticize you too much, but I appreciate your work on this.
We looked at the 15-year forward capacity estimates from the, you know, the, well, I've forgotten, the AECC or whatever the thing is, AECF, that estimates forward-capacity markets, and it seems to be stable to better. You know, a few years ago was very high, it's come down, but it's also going back up.
Yeah, they've created, yeah, but what I'm saying is they're unpredictable, and it's a risk-seeking process.
I'm just going to, he's got your feedback, he has your feedback in a town meeting. You can speak your perspective.
Sure, but I'm just trying to be helpful.
No, I understand that. No, that's great. Take your perspective, and that would be great, and then provide that information at town meeting, too.
Okay, great.
It's good. Thank you.
Send me a 50-burn up. Just one clarification question. Aren't we promoting using more fossil fuels with that by drawing the energy in the night when there's mainly fossil fuel? And we already drawing 49% of our electricity from fossil fuels. So I'm just wondering, what's the source of the power that's getting put into the batteries?
It is likely to be power that's purchased in the evening after the sun's gone down. However, the light plant, all the energy that the light plant brings in is from renewable or non-emitting sources. So I know you're going to tell me that it's all an accounting trick, which it is, and I'm completely on board with that. I completely believe, I completely agree with that, but that's the party line, and I'm sticking with that.
The official line on the website is, "It's not an offset." So it's not offsetting the 49% of the fossil fuels. So we're still taking it.
Right. We're buying an accounting credit that indicates that this is a renewable...
Okay, let's keep moving.
It's all good.
Anthony, we have Pamela Dritt. Did she raise her hand? Pamela, you are promoted, but please unmute yourself.
Pamela Dritt, 13 Concord Green, Unit 4. Since solar and wind and battery backups are no-brainer investments, since they pay us back what we spend on them, and that isn't even including the benefit to the sustainability principles by decarbonizing our energy supply, and also reducing our costs of distribution because it's locally generated. I really dislike the idea of you're lowering the ask since it reduces your flexibility, our flexibility, to take advantage of good new ideas. It also means you have to come back to the town every time you have a new project that might happen. I don't think you should lower the original warrant costs because I think these are really good investments. And we save money with batteries by charging them when power is cheap and discharging them when power is expensive. And we charge them with carbon-free power that we generate with our solar panels. And the town spending solar for people to buy for a roof is cheaper if you just incentivize individuals to put it on their own roofs. And, for example, we want to have an all-electric school bus fleet so we don't poison our kids the way we're doing it now. And that bus fleet will have vehicle-to-grid ability...
So let's... So let's, let's, let's not, let's not get into electrical vehicles.
But that would save thousands of dollars.
Fair enough, that's fair enough, but, fair enough. Well, that is not the subject of this article.
It is.
Well, it is not, with all due respect.
Green energy.
Well, that is not the subject of the article. If there's a question here, I'll give you 15 seconds to ask the question. Otherwise, I think Dean heard your input that you prefer that the solar not be taken out. Is there a question?
Well, not, has not be taken out, but the amount of, of money with permission to, that we have permission to spend not be reduced so that we can take advantage of new ideas that come up in the future.
Thank you for your feedback. All right. I don't think we have anybody else on Zoom or? Oh, Matt did, okay. Matt, no electric vehicles, please.
Actually, my question is somewhat related to panelists because I just.
Hold on a second. Again, you know, I don't want to take up, we're already getting close to nine. We still have CPCs. So if it's on point, then that's fair, but otherwise we're going to move on.
No, but the, the question really is to the size of the storage. So, you know, if a $2 million, $3 million storage system is going to be cash flow positive, one out of $5 million storage system. That's my question.
We felt as though this was a, a good, this was a good first step. We, we expect to come back with those solar arrays in the future. We're, we were close, but we could not get these feasibility studies over the line. So by the time we come to a next town meeting, we should be able to bring that and we can bring another battery then. The, the town does have a goal of, I think it's 60 megawatts of, of battery storage within the community. So it's, there's a lot of these, these things need to be installed. We have one to go in at CMS. We have to cut our teeth on something and this will be a second. So we're, we're going to just go with one for now. We did think about it. We did discuss it briefly at the.
Yeah, because you got the scope of the article that you could work with.
Yep. You got this, it's within the scope. We could certainly do it, but we have declined.
And someone could amend or attempt to.
Yes, they could. Yes, they could.
Thanks.
All right. Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Dean. Appreciate it. We will now go to CPC article. Burton is up. Let me, for the committee here, because CPC didn't come to our meeting last Thursday, I do not want to take 30, 40 minutes tonight because we still have a fine, regular finance committee. So if we have questions, let's ask one question apiece. And then other questions, we can bring them back at our regularly scheduled meeting next Thursday.
Are they going to come?
Well, I don't know if they'll come or not. We can invite them.
I have more than one question.
I understand that, but otherwise we may be here a long time. So I just want to make sure that we end relatively early and pace ourselves. Okay? Burton, I'm going to give you 15 minutes since you didn't come last week. So go quickly through the presentation and then, as you've heard, lots of interest around here, but I don't want to spend half an hour, 45 minutes here. Okay?
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I did my level best to beat that by about five minutes. Burton Flynn, Chair of the CPC, Article 40, Community Preservation, Community Preservation Act Appropriation Recommendations. This is an overview of the entire spend that we're proposing. The total is $1,878,000. That is about $1,000 over the projected fiscal year CPC funds, which leaves us with about $700,000 in previously unspent funds or, or set aside funds that are, are allocated to the CPC. The breakdown here is roughly in line with how the historical spend that the CPC has done. Historic preservation here is about 30%. Historically, we're at about 38% essentially the creation of, the adoption of the CPA in Concord. Community housing is a little bit larger than it has been historically. That's been about 21%. This year it's about 28%. Recreation and open space are each generally in the range of about 22%. So recreation, a little bit larger this year, open space, a little bit smaller. Open space tends to be kind of lumpy spending because it's land acquisition. The first recommendation we're making is for the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. This is an allocation of $500,000 to support the, the town's housing production plan and the, the goal of getting a 10% affordable SHI eligible housing units. This is a little bit of an unusual allocation for CPC in that it's not allocated for a specific project, but rather to fund essentially the trust goals. I would point out, we had two other applicants that were both housing projects. It came to us for funding and discussing it with those applicants. They decided to withdraw their, their applications and go directly to the trust for funding. And there was a lot of discussion around, should you be coming to the CPC for specific projects? Or can the trust, or can the CPC fund the trust and the, and the trust can use its expertise? But this is in general support of the housing production plan. The next housing piece is the Regional Housing Service Program. The town shared of that for 3,3500. This is every year viewed as one of the best returns on our investment that we get for the coordination that that office does and the grants that it applies for and the, the coordination of the Concord Housing Roundtable. The next is a open space and recreation request with a recommended funding level of $200,000 to take the Assabett River Bridge Trail Design and Permitting to the 100% point so that it would be fully designed and fully permitted. This is tremendous return on our, on our investment. I believe this is the third request. The total town investment is roughly about $600,000. This money for, to get us to 100, to 100% design will be leveraged with an additional, I believe it's $450,000 in grant funding. And once we get to 100%, it's an expensive design process because we're meeting federal standards. We are in the Transportation Improvement Plan for over $10 million of funds from the state and federal, federal dollars that would go to the actual construction of the bridge. So that's about a 10 to one return on our, our investment. The next is the Hillcrest Conservation Land Steps Replacement. This is to design and develop cost estimates for replacing these steps, which I believe were originally maybe done by a Boy Scout troop. They're very degraded. They're, it's an extraordinarily steep slope that provides access to a town-owned open space along the Kennedy Pond. That, that, that land is kind of hemmed in by private property and the pond itself. So this is one of the few access points and it's very steep. The committee goes and visits the site every year and has quite a time climbing down. The, so this is for the, the design will be a challenge. Next is the White Pond APod Program. The town, the, the, I believe it's the Friends' White Pond have, have spearheaded a program to put these APods, which is this technology for removing the cyanobacteria algae blooms from the, from the surface of the pond, has had very good success with a sort of a pilot program and, and which I believe last summer resulted in there being no pond closings as there had been in the prior years. This is to invest in two of these machines where we would buy the machines. The town would fund out of the regular town budget. The, it's essentially a maintenance contract. It's, I believe, about $30,000 a year for maintenance and water testing. This is for the purchase of these, which are estimated to last about 10 years. The next is the 250 Trees for the 250th Initiative. This is a, the applicants Concord 250 Permanent Memorial Subcommittee for $125,000 to, to plan and fund in coordination with DPW and the, the Town Tree Warden, the commemorative planting of 250 trees. These trees would go on existing town-owned open space, recreation areas, and potentially in historic districts as well. The next is the Haywood Meadow Wall Restoration. We've had a number of CPC allocations previously to, to build the, the Haywood Meadow is on Lexington Road at, at Haywood Street and to build stone walls facing Lexington Road. These, this is a wall that actually, there's not much to look at there, but what it is, is a retaining wall that's essentially holding up that sidewalk in the picture. So it's a, it's a larger drop on the other side. It's very degraded. The wall's beginning to crumble and fall. And so this would be to restore that wall in, matching the, the other historic stone walls that have been put on Lexington Road. The next is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail, Concord Prison Cemetery, Naming the Unnamed Project. This is a recreation project requesting $45,000. The reason it's recreation is because it is on a town recreation asset, which is the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail. And this has the support of the Bruce Freeman Rail Trail Committee. The applicants Concord Prison Outreach Organization, it's a nonprofit, that does different things with, with the prison. This is to recognize the 217 men that are buried in the reformatory prison, which is immediately adjacent to the trail. It would create a contemplative spot to sit and, and, and view the cemetery and also would have information on accessing the archiving, the digital archiving information project that's being done in coordination with the town library. The next is the Athletic Fields at the Concord Middle School. This is a request from Concord Public Schools, funding $250,000 in response to the request, I believe, of this committee to find sort of every available alternative funding source. This essentially offsets previously approved borrowing capacity in, in the middle school construction. So what this would do is essentially reduce the town borrowing that would go towards the completion of the middle school project by $250,000. And don't hold me to this, but I think that saves about $60,000 in borrowing costs over the life of the bonding. The next is Concord Art Association Historic Structure Preservation at 37 Lexington Road. This is the, the gallery and studio space just down the street here. And it's, they are doing an extensive renovation and addition project. This is to fund some particular elements of that project that are very sorely needed. And we, the recommended funding level is $173,833. That, and that's a, that's a project that's, there's a much, much larger investment that's being made by the, by the association. This next is the Ventilation, Air Conditioning, Painting and Roof Repairs at 51 Walden Street. 51 Walden Street is a town-owned building, originally built as a town armory, but it's been a performing arts space for about 100 years and, and a number of groups have been in there for the past 50 years. It's leased by the town for a dollar a year. And as a performing arts space, there's not a whole lot of money available for maintaining the, the building. They're, they've requested $195,000 out of, out of about 100, about a $450,000 restoration project. This goes to very needed painting and ventilation and air conditioning systems to stabilize the building and, and help with ventilation in post-COVID world. And, let's see. The next is the Concord Historic Preservation Survey of Reported Pre-1775 Structures. With the 250th anniversary, there's a lot of focus on things from this era. And this is essentially to do a, a historic survey of buildings or other built environment from before 1775. There's information on this, but I think people want to take a, a look at it with sort of a modern historian's eye. This next one is Preservation of Two Very Historic Town Documents. You may be aware that the town has many very significant documents stored in, in the archive in the basement of, of the main library. These are two documents, a broadside of the Declaration of Independence, which is not an original copy from Philadelphia, but it was a copy that was made, a broadside that was made. One copy was sent to each town in, in the Commonwealth at that time. There's very few existing. I think there's maybe six existing and we have a very pristine copy. The other is the Non-Importation Covenant, which is a covenant signed by, by the townspeople at that time to say they would pledge not to import anything from, from the UK. Both fascinating documents, especially the Non-Importation Covenant to look at. I'm sure the archivists would be happy to, to take the time with the 17, with the 250th anniversary. They anticipate these things will be on display. They've been preserved previously, but that, that not, there's higher standards. They can do it by today and, and the previous preservation is beginning to fail in, in terms of the binders and things that they're in. That's $8,000. The next is Robin House. This has received a lot of CPC funding in the past. It was restored in 2011. 13 years later, some things are starting to show. The exterior finish didn't quite hold up as the way it was anticipated. There's woodpecker damage to the trim. There's been settling of one of the walkways, so it's no longer ADA compliant. They essentially want to, is, is a very small organization with very little funding and, and they, they, they have come to us for $30,687 to make those repairs to this very popular historic site that's part of the, the, the bridge park. Next is the Concord Scout House Floor Restoration Project. The scout house is used for lots of town dance activities and of course scouting activities. As you see here, that the scouts doing their, their, those, those cars they build. The floor is very degraded. They haven't been able to, to actually sand it for, I believe, something like 15 years. And it's beginning to splinter because it's been sanded down so many times. I think they've got about 100 years out of it. They're going to, they want to replace it with light materials, a new maple floor that would, would hold up for, for future generations. This is a cemetery metal structures assessment. The, the cemeteries, which are run by DPW along with the, the Cemeteries Committee, has been doing a lot of restoration of things. We've supported restoring stone walls in the cemetery previously. And what they'd like to do is assess the metal structures such as gates and wrought iron fencing, some of them around particular memorials, some of them at the entrance to the cemetery, the, the three-town cemeteries, or excuse me, yeah, three-town cemeteries. And so this is an assessment that would be followed presumably by a request for funds for that work to restore them. And then we've got the CPC staff and technical support. This is at about 2.5% of our budget. Historically, it's about 2%. It went up a little bit because the town started actually allocating legal expense to CPC, but it's $46,500 for staff, technical, legal, support, posting notices and the like. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Four minutes to spare. Thank you. So let's go around the room. We'll start here, we'll alternate back and forth. Ask one question. If we get through these, one wrong, we'll go right again. But as I said, I cannot all be here for 45 minutes.
Burton, these, this concerns the recreation component of your warrant article. There are six recreation articles and yet only one of them has the blessing from the Recreation Commission in the form of a support letter. And that's the school irrigation field. So here's the question. Will, going forward, will the CPC try to align its recreation funding with the Recreation Strategic Plan that is now available for comment? And if not, why not?
I think we very much would, just like we, we try to align our housing funding with the Town Housing Production Plan. And I believe the CPC, if I'm not mistaken, helped fund the recreation plan with that goal.
Sorry. Okay, other questions?
Yeah. Just one question. It's about the Assabett, Assabett River Bridge. Could you just go back and talk about how long has this design been going on? And this is the last part of it because I think when I was on the committee, it was, we were designing then. So could you talk a little bit about that? And then the implication of when we have 100% design, you said something that the state would fund the cost of the bridge?
So Dee, I don't know the exact date. You're right, we've been talking about this. I walked that land with you probably six years ago, right? It is a long drawn out process. And, and once you go for federal funding, as I'm sure you have experienced, you've got to follow that federal design process. You've got to meet federal design requirements. So they did the initial, I think for a long time, it was sort of a slow process because the town was looking to see, well, how are we going to pay for the bridge? Are we going to get contributions from the, the property owners on Baker Ave? Where will that come from? And, and the town was investigating funding sources. But they, they did a 25% design to get a stake in the ground so that people would be thinking about the bridge. This is now the admittedly expensive design process that gets you to 100% design and permitting. So it would be quote unquote shovel-ready at that point, which get, but this is within, the, the state has a rolling five-year Transportation Improvement Plan. And this is funded with, or this is, this is earmarked within that plan. Once you get to 100%, then you can be, you can be submitted to be funded in the, in the following year or year after that. And, but we are in the current, whatever that would be, 23, 2023 through 2028 tip.
So when will, when will we know the cost for, for construction?
When will we know the actual, so the, the cost to the town? It's my understanding, and I can come back with more information on this by checking with, with Elizabeth Hughes, that the construction cost would not be a town cost. We're responsible for the design and permitting cost.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Hi, Burton. Item F is my question, the 250 trees for the 250. It sounds like a nice idea, but will this, they all be? The 250 trees for the 250, it sounds like a nice idea, but will this, they all be in one location, or is this spread all over town? And if so, how does it form a memorial?
I think it will be a combination of those two things. So this is actually the project that received the most affirmative support in terms of letters we've received to the committee, and we also investigated with the town council, what are the restrictions, or what's the permissible way to use town funds for this? As you may be aware, the DPW has a tree planting program, and CPC funds can't be used to supplant what would otherwise be town spending, right? And there are specific parameters and categories that CPA funds can be used for. We invest, the town council said, well, you could use it to enhance existing town open space, or any town or otherwise owned recreation area, and also potentially within historic districts to enhance a historic district. When we put together the grant agreement on this, I think we'll get more definitive clarity on where that will be, but I would anticipate this would be in numerous locations throughout town. 250 trees is a lot.
Thanks.
All right. Do you have questions?
Yes. Thank you. On the first project, the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, can you be a little bit more specific about what you mean by support the development of these affordable units? Is this going towards the actual construction and finishing of the units themselves? What does it go to?
So the housing trust at any given time receives requests for proposals for housing projects. They may come from the Concord Housing Authority, they may come from the CHDC, the groups in town that are responsible for developing housing. This money is not earmarked to anything other than supporting, meeting that SHI 10% level and in furtherance of the housing production plan. So it's not for any completion of any particular project. When we said, the trust is a relatively new body that's been set up, that is sort of the hub now where these groups can come together, and they can hold money so that when a, for example, if CHDC, a project comes up sometimes, and this happened with the Assabette Bluffs, they said, we need to put together a purchase agreement quickly. We don't have time to go through the town meeting calendar cycle and the town's fiscal year cycle. So the idea was the trust can hold money in anticipation of those kinds of opportunities. We, I don't know whether this will be the practice going forward, but following, granting the trust the money that was returned to us from the assisted living facility that didn't go forward, that money was returned to us. We gave that to the trust so they could put it to use as quickly as possible, and we did that again with this $500,000, but it's not allocated to a specific project.
Thank you. Chris?
Yeah. So this is just, maybe it's more a comment than a question. So with respect to the middle school fields, so in the original budget, there's 1.7 million for athletic fields. This does not change that budget, is that correct?
That is my understanding from the presentation we got.
So Carlin, it has nothing to do with irrigation. This is the existing fields as they were meant to be built. This is now just another source of funding, the 250,000 from the CPC. No change in continuity, no change in the project budget, it's just another source of funding.
That's the application we received from CPC, from the Concord Public Schools.
Thank you.
Louis?
No questions.
Lindsey?
The White Pond APod Program, the $30,000 recommended funding, does that cover just installing the APods, or does it include any money for ongoing operation or maintenance of them?
It's for the acquisition of the two devices. So those devices sort of float around the pond or stationed around the pond. Separately, there's $36,000 per year for maintenance and water testing. And that's, that would come out of town funding that I think are coming through the Department of Natural Resources.
Okay. Suresh, any questions from your end? Kathy, Suresh, you guys still there? You guys?
Also, no questions.
All right. These guys took away a couple of my questions, so I'll ask one question, then we'll make another round since we do have time. Who are the other two applicants for the affordable housing? You mentioned two.
Concord Housing Authority and the CHDC.
Okay. Carlin, do you have another question on another topic? Dee?
I would like to ask, with regards to 51 Walden, what is 51 Walden, Inc.?
It's, that is a great question. It is, I believe, the organization that essentially coordinates the various performing arts groups that use that space. So they're responsible for programming the space.
So who's then, who is putting this in? Is the town putting this request in? The town owns the property?
The town owns the property, but 51 Walden is responsible for its upkeep.
So they're going to be the recipient of the funds?
That's correct.
To take care of whatever the problems are in the building?
And they've done their own fundraising for about 60% of the project, and as they have done with prior projects, this is not our first project supporting them. But yeah, they would be the recipients of the funds.
Okay. Thank you.
Don, other question?
Nope.
You want another one?
I have one more. Burton, so we had $1.9 million to spend. Did you have a request greater than that?
No, and I think the final number was like 1.8, actually. But we are, we were over the available for this fiscal year by, I believe it was about $1,020, and we had about $700,000 and $700 and change in the bank.
Do we have to spend it all? Can't we carry it over?
We do not, and it is, we were not aiming to spend the exact amount we had. We actually don't get that number until we're really far along in the process of considering applications. It just so happened, at the end of the day, all the applications that had the support of the committee came to almost the exact number that we got for FY '24.
But if you wanted to, you can carry over money. You don't have to.
Yeah, we have in the past. That's why we have about $700,000 in, either, we have about $250,000 in a designated reserve for open space and $400,000 in change that has been carried over from years past. That generally comes back to us from returned projects. Projects come in under budget, and that's how that builds up.
Thank you.
Any other questions? So let me ask my question. So this is a little bit related, maybe, and maybe in anticipation for what happens if you get requests, go over what you can give out in a given year. So I saw the cemetery project is asking for money for assessing. When applicants come in and ask for assessments, do you ask them for a rough estimate of what the overall cost might look like in the time period? Because I'm thinking maybe they may come back and ask CPC for funding to actually execute on the capital projects, right?
Right.
And so, is that a general practice of a CPC? Or not?
I would say, yeah, in the discussion. So the process is the applicant comes in, we assess the application in the committee, we go out, we have a site visit, we look at that, we have follow-up questions, and for most of those things where they're coming in, either in the case where they're looking, doing an assessment that would result in a later, say, restoration spend, or a multi-year project, we ask questions about what they think would be the final spend. I don't have an answer for you, though, on what that answer would have been for the cemetery project.
Well, so I guess the question is, before March 28th, maybe next week, is it possible, if you've got a list, these are the current applicants or past ones, and this is what we think they're going to come back with for additional funding for the next three to five years? Do you guys have that list? And the reason I'm raising it is we've heard about the restroom facility of high schools, and one of the concepts is to come to CPC for that money. And so I'm sort of thinking, if they come for 1.6 or 1.7, whatever they come for, how that's going to crowd out everything else in a given year? What would be the impact on delaying projects that you've already funded, that are either in the middle of their execution of actually building or restoration? So trying to assess what the impact is on the rest of the projects. So is it possible to get that list of currently where do things stand in terms of what CPC has funded and what you're expecting those applicants to come back with, those additional dollars and timelines?
I'd be happy to see if we can get that information from applicants, anything that, but by the nature of the project suggests there'll be future spend. I know as a committee, we always, at least, I've been on, and it's my view that we never, even if we're partially funding a project, like happened with building up the reserve funds for the assisted living facility, that we're never committing a future committee, which is constituted of a different group of town citizens, and, you know, you may get the money or you may not. I would say that probably what would be more, if you're looking at a project that might be, say, over a million dollars, it's going to eat up 70, 80% of the budget, the question would be, what would the general, what would the housing requests be in that year? Is community housing funding going to start coming from a real estate transfer fee, where putting less pressure on the CPC? What's the town's appetite for not doing any, you know, open space or recreation, or, you know, aside from a facility like that? But I'll ask town staff to see if they can reach out to the applicants, looking at the ones that might have.
Hold on, is it related to this?
It's related to this, yeah. So isn't, so Warner's Pond would have been on there, right? Other than the fact that we sort of came back, you know, and said, we're not sure what we want to do, you know, the dam or the, you know, knock dam? That's a big number, right? And they were going to use CPC funds for some of that?
Yeah, Warner's Pond, essentially, I think, there were three allocations. I think we got up to $900,000, and if I get the numbers wrong, I apologize. $600,000 of that, I think, or a little more than that, was specifically designated to dredging. Whatever happens with Warner Pond, if it's not dredging, they'll need to come back to the CPC on that. It's possible, if nothing happens at Warner's Pond, that they would be, that all of it, that wasn't used so far in the study, which was, let's say, $60,000 would be coming back, just like what happened with the assisted living facility. We got almost a million dollars back.
Right. So, I mean, the challenge is, there's a good percentage of this that's town project, right? It gets funneled through this, but it's sort of outside the capital planning process, right? That's the challenge.
Well, it's a challenge, I think, for that, and they probably should be mentioned in the capital, this should all be included in the capital plan.
They should be, and this is simply a funding source.
This is a funding source, agreed. But then, if you think about CPC itself, the fact, I guess you're saying that your commitment for one year doesn't commit all future committees.
It doesn't, but then it leaves projects half finished, which you don't want to do.
It doesn't strictly connect.
Exactly. That's sort of inefficient to a certain extent, particularly for smaller organizations, right? So, that's all. Carlin.
Following up on what Chris was saying, dealing with Warner's Pond, what was the commission, what was your committee's rationale for not pulling back now that $600,000 and having them reapply later on? Why are you choosing to wait?
Because a decision hasn't been made on Warner's Pond, the applicant hasn't said they're not proceeding with a particular alternative. There hasn't been anything coming from Natural Resources saying that they won't ultimately proceed with what we funded. Now, we do look, we have a sort of a running check-in on where applications are, and when we see that there's been money sitting there for a while, and sometimes it sits there for a very long while, we go to the applicant and we say, you need to, and the grant agreements will say they need to return the money within a certain period of time. I believe that period of time is maybe five years. I'd need to double-check.
Chris?
So this is probably to Keith. Is the 2 million the number? Is that what we're going to keep it around in terms of needing a war chest for affordable housing, or do you want it to be higher?
Keith Berkman, 56 White Ave, Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And first, I'd want to call to your attention that in your packets for tonight is a memo I sent over the weekend, which included a detailed fund balance of where the money has gone. In a nutshell, since 2019, when town meeting first started putting its money aside for a trust, total of 4.1 million has gone into the trust. The current balance, the uncommitted balance there is about 2 million right now, and we're requesting another half a million. And the projects that are on our radar screen, Assabette River Bluff, the three affordable units, there's a million, a million and a half there. There's a surplus state property at 91B Main Street that the town is seeking to acquire and develop. There is Junction Village, which has a, as yet undetermined price tag. So we have plenty of things that we, to do with the $2.5 million that we would end up with, with this money. Beyond that, we're hopeful, I mean, if this year isn't it, there may never be a circumstance where a real estate transfer fee for affordable housing gets passed. It's in the Governor's Bill, which has been favorably recommended thus far by the Joint Committee on Housing. It's still alive, and in the long run, going back to the 2019 town meeting, the plan was always to establish a trust, get an outside funding source, and, you know, appropriate money in the meantime. I'd say for the foreseeable future, if it's, if there's not a real estate transfer fee, it's most likely that we, and I realize the free cash situation, that the requests that we would be making would be to the CPC for funds. The letter that I submitted indicates that all four of the Concord boards with housing in their name, the trust, the Housing Authority, the CHDC, and the Concord Housing Foundation, all support the funding for the, to have the funds in the trust to be able to commit funds to production projects when they are ready to proceed. We spend a lot of time working as a group, all of the housing boards, we convene quarterly as the Concord Housing Roundtable. We have a list of projects that we are all in agreement on what's going to happen, so that when the circumstances arose, that two of the, two of our members went, filed, actually, three of us filed applications for funding to CPC totaling 1.2 or 3 or more million dollars, more than they had, that we took a step back and got two of the other two to withdraw their applications. Why? Because if they applied directly to the trust, we could grant them the funds, which we did. And in fact, for the Housing Authority, we gave them the $400,000 in November. They bought the property in January, and it's already occupied.
So 2 million is your goal, or 4 million? That was Chris's first question.
It's sort of 2 and 1/2 million.
We have, we would have a uncommitted fund balance.
In an ideal world, what would you like the fund balance to remain at? That, I think, was the question.
Well, frankly, in what the goal would be, to be putting the money to work and not just looking at a fund.
Not, I understand, but you have to keep replenishing it, right? So the question, this is not a gotcha question.
Yeah, no, I mean, if the.
2 million or 4 million or 3 million? That's, it's.
I would anticipate that a year from now, we may not have a fund balance left.
And you won't want one in the future?
The 250,000, the 2.5 million, rather, that we would have as of July 1st will all be expended before the following July 1st.
But will you then want to replenish it?
Yeah, I'd want another, I'd want another half a million. Want another half a million from CPC.
So.
So you're going to keep asking for half a million?
You're going to keep asking for half a million regardless of what the fund balance is? I mean.
That's what I'm asking. I'm trying to figure.
Yeah, the fund balance now is on the high side, that if we could have spent it on some of the opportunities that no longer presented themselves, so if, you know, we had committed a million dollars to Christopher Heights, but we just as happily spent the funds that were not needed on other projects and put the money, we're looking to put the money to work, we're not looking to have a fund balance, we're looking to spend.
So that's fine. This is not a gotcha question, just try to understand.
And thank you very much for the tables in that letter. It's very helpful. I really appreciate it. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, one last comment. With regards, I just want to make some clarification point here about your question, when you said, well, if the town came in, or if the schools came in and wanted the $2 million for the bathroom, nobody else would get any funds. And I'm going to let Burton make the clarification as to why that could not happen.
Because each category needs to get a minimum of 10%. Right. Thank you, Dee. Yeah, so if we had, for example, $2 million, and it's actually, I believe it's the three main categories. Recreation is combined with open space, but we would need at least $40,000 to housing, $40,000 to historic preservation, and then the rest could be spent on, you know, big recreation ask. ask.
If you asked, we have to hold.
Right, and you, Diane, you're saying that if we don't have a project to put it to, we need to allocate it into a reserve fund for that in the future. Yeah. So there's a 10% minimum requirement by category.
All right. Any other questions, comments, concerns? We're going to elevate Matt Johnson. I think he still has his question, I think.
Yeah, my question, Matthew Johnson, 21 Winter Street. My question concerns item D, the Hillcrest Conservation Land Steps. I can appreciate the complexity, the engineering of these steps, having seen the steps that are at the confluence of the Assebit and the Shover Brook that after just a few months are inaccessible. But I just was curious about the cost and seeing that it's only for the design and not the construction. So, considering that it's a hemmed-in property by private land that could have conflicts with the Butters in the future if this is developed, and that there are nearby trails that are very heavily used that desperately need maintenance, like the old rifle range, I'm just trying to understand what the anticipated total cost of this effort is and how the CPC, you know, weighs the benefit here versus the benefit of, of higher-use trails.
Thanks, Matt. So first of all, those trails in the rifle range have been funded by the CPC for improvement. So that, that should be coming. With respect to the value here, I will say that this has been a community-driven project that Hillcrest Neighborhood and the Friends of Kennedy Pond have been working on for a number of years, have come to the CPC, and we've told them, come back, work on this, get, get the town on board. Natural Resources has gotten on board, and this is now a town proposal. I think that maybe like you, I'm always surprised that as soon as you make it a, a town project with the way town bidding rules and the like work, that these things are expensive, especially for planning and permitting. It's a challenging site. I'm not sure I understand the question about encroachments or, or restrictions from other private landowners. The town has clear title to this land, and there's plenty of space to work with. It just happens to be very challenging topography.
Well, just to clarify, there is a, a private trail that goes through the Sportsman's Club that could connect to the old rifle range trail if it weren't private and full of no trespassing signs, and is quite tempting already.
Yeah, if you, if you, if you're not allergic to lead, right?
With better access, it could be further. But I didn't hear an answer to the question about what the anticipated total cost of this project would be to be constructed.
I don't have that for you, but at the chair's request, I can, I'll have town staff reach out to the applicants on those types, on these types of requests that are associated with planning.
And we'll have a complete.
Appreciate to have that at town meeting.
Matt, on this one and the other ones that are similar. So, as Burton said earlier, so that'd be good. Any other questions going, sorry?
Pamela.
No?
Pamela.
Oh. Pamela, you are being promoted. And you are on mute.
Pamela, 13 Concord Green. Ah, the, the question's disappeared. I, I like the idea of the renovations at 51 Walden Street, including air conditioning, which would mean that we could use it in the summertime. Is that going to be heat pump?
I can double-check the application. I don't know off the top of my head whether it's a heat pump. Oh, I'm getting a thumbs up that it is a heat pump. Yep, that's a heat pump.
Oh, good, good. And also, the, the athletic field money for the middle school, is that's planning to be natural turf and not artificial turf?
I believe that is a natural turf field, yeah.
And is there any money per, considered to be spent to remove the high school artificial turf while we still are allowed to?
That has nothing to do with this year's article.
Hmm. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I believe that is it. Thank you, Burton. We look forward to the list of projects that are being assessed with cost estimates and projected cost.
I'll do my best to get that, yeah. The date for that was the 24th?
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth.
Before the 28th. Our meeting is on the 28th, and, you know, we typically go through project by project. And so for those where members don't feel comfortable having enough information, we will defer it until the 28th, but we need to get our report done by then.
Okay.
So sooner would be better, but definitely by the 28th. Thanks. All right. Can I get a motion to, am I allowed to adjourn now, Anthony?
No.
Oh, clerk is telling me no. What else do we have to do?
We have correspondence.
Oh, no, 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 we have to close the public hearing.
Oh, the hearing. Oh, yes, we can.
Can I get a motion to close the hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Call the roll.
Okay, so we have to do the roll for our meeting. And the roll ahead, okay. Suresh, are you still there?
Right.
Okay. Peggy Grit, no. Kathy Kukuloe, you still there? Okay, thank you. Eric Dahlberg?
Yes.
John Garofalo, no. Greg, no. Amrit, no. Don Kupka?
Yes.
Lindsay Lutz?
Here.
Deortner, here. Parashar Patel?
Yes, and just to be clear, we're voting on a motion to close the hearing.
Right.
Okay.
Carlin Reed?
Aye.
Christine Reynolds?
Aye.
And Lois Wasoff?
Aye.
We closed, we closed the hearing. Now we have to open up our meeting.
Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to repeat all this again.
Get a motion to open our meeting?
Motion to open up our meeting at 9:33 here.
Second.
Thank you. Suresh?
Right.
Okay. Kathy Kukuloe?
Aye.
Eric Dahlberg?
Yes.
Greg Guriello, no, no. Don Kupka?
Yes.
Lindsay Lutz?
Yes.
Deortner, yes. Parashar Patel?
Here.
Carlin Reed?
Aye.
Christine Reynolds?
Yes.
Lois Wasoff?
Yes.
So we have our call.
All right, excuse me. For those in the audience, please take your conversations outside. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Now, let's go to the agenda.
Okay, the agenda. I guess we could do the minutes?
Uh, no, no, no.
Do we have a different agenda?
Discuss and potentially vote.
We've got a discussion, potentially vote.
Oh.
Okay, so the, okay.
Yes, okay.
Hold on, hold on. Do we want five minutes? I'm looking at the committee.
Yes.
Okay. So, to be clear, it is 9:40. At 9:45, we're going to come back. We're going to go through the articles we want to vote on, and the goal is to get out as fast as possible. Five minutes.
Okay, that's the goal. 9:45.
Oh, man.
Sooner we get, sooner we get out. All right, we are way beyond by two minutes. Our 9:45 deadline.
All right, do we have to go through roll call again?
Uh, yes, unfortunately, we do. So, Article 13, the 250th celebration. Can I get a motion, either motion, and then we can discuss, or do we have questions?
I have questions, but I'll wait till after.
No, no, that's all.
No, no, my question, so I don't have an issue with the.
Did I add anything to my comment?
Sorry, pardon me. So I don't have an issue with the item, but my question is, it's, it's coming from free cash, and we hadn't finished our conversation on free cash. So I think we got an update from Anthony that you think the estimate's around eight million?
Eight point five.
Oh, eight point five? Okay. So if I deducted the million we were going to take to offset taxes, and the 350, we were above the 5%. Am I correct? Yeah. Okay. So that was, that was the one thing I wanted to make sure people knew.
And remember, we did away with the 600.
Yes, because we did weigh the 600, right? And the number went up.
Article, okay.
Yeah, it's the one we're talking about. Oh, the one we're talking about. Yeah.
I keep saying 350. It's really the 250th celebration. I'm ahead by 100 years.
But the ask is 350.
The ask is 350, yes.
The ask is 350, right. Okay, so, so did any, so is everybody okay with that on the free cash side? That's really the question here. Are you okay taking the?
Is there something else that we have to worry about?
Not right now.
Okay.
So remember, you know, one of the questions Mary had was whether we wanted to adjust the million? That's a separate article.
That's a separate article.
Okay. So, I'm happy to make a motion to, you want to say something?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I mean, personally, it would be irresponsible not to give them the money, particularly since the money would come back, whatever's unspent would come back to the town anyway, right?
Yeah, I was just going to say, we should rec, should vote, though, recognizing that it will reduce the amount that we can do, you know, use.
Future.
Your future or, or that million that you were referring to, that we, we haven't discussed yet for, for taxes. So it'll, ultimately, we're going to pay the piper, so to speak, this year. But I, I do think it would be irresponsible not to do it.
Okay. So I make a motion to have affirmative action on Article 13.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? I'm going to give Suresh and Kathy a chance to either weigh in or say something. Otherwise, I think we just had our discussion. But do you guys have any comments or questions, Kathy or Suresh?
No.
Okay, so.
I'm for it.
Okay, good. So then let's go ahead and call the roll.
Okay, roll call vote. Suresh?
Aye.
Kathy Kukuloe?
Aye.
Eric Dahlberg?
Yes.
Don Kupka?
Aye.
Lindsay Lutz?
Aye.
Deortner, yes. Parashar Patel?
Yes.
Carlin Reed?
Aye, yes.
Christine Reynolds?
Yes.
And Lois Wasman? Wasso, I'm sorry.
I'm saying the other, or someone else.
Yes. Okay, that's unanimous.
Okay, Article 15, establishing a permanent senior means tested property tax exemption. Any comments, discussions, questions we want on this article? I don't hear any.
It's like we're ready to vote. So I will offer a motion for affirmative action on Article 15.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, can I get a most, can I get a?
Roll call.
Roll call.
Okay, Suresh?
Aye.
Kathy Kukuloe?
Yes.
Eric Dahlberg?
Yes.
John, down to Don Kupka?
Yes.
Lindsay Lutz?
Yes.
Deortner, yes. Parashar Patel?
Yes.
Carlin Reed?
Aye.
Christine Reynolds?
Aye.
Lois Wasoff?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Okay, so that, it means we are going to Article 17, Nagog Pond Improvements and PFAS Mitigation. Any questions, comments, discussion? Don, you breathe the sighs, have a sigh of relief?
No, I, I, my feeling on this is that it's premature. That said, that I don't want to be an impediment to action once they have a plan. And as I see it, about 30, 35 million or so has nothing to do with PFAS. It probably, right? It, it, it's something else, although the presentation really focuses on PFAS. This is really taking care of infrastructure that needs to be, needs to be addressed.
Well, it would be the infrastructure that you would need in order to control PFAS as well.
Well, we have, we have surface water issues in, in the pond, and that's a lot.
That's right, but you would also have this other.
If there were no PFAS, we'd still be talking about this, is my point.
That's correct, we would.
Maybe not the same amount.
Right, right, right.
And I think, I think, Don, I mean, I think your reservations are correct. It's a, it's a very high-level presentation for a very big number. But I think what Alan was speaking to is that they need to get in the queue. So they're making a very high-level estimate because they want to get in the queue for that state lending, and they won't borrow anything, I think, before they have to. One of my other questions, which I, I think I was speaking to Anthony about, was who has oversight of this, right, beyond Alan? And Alan reports up to Kerry, so town manager would, but there's also.
The Public Works Commission.
A Public Works Commission, right?
And they've been examining this extensively.
Have they given affirmative action on this item?
Hold on.
Sanviwa, Vice Chair of the Public Works Commission. Yes, we are, we are in favor of it, and I agree. We have to get in the slot for the state to get in line for kind of a low-interest loan. And yes, 35 million is for kind of general water treatment.
But it, you know, it is a very high-level estimate with not a lot of detail, so I presume that your group is looking at that.
Yeah, the biggest issue Alan and we struggle with is that there are so many unknowns, again, because of PFAS, yeah? And that kind of dominates right now the, the agenda in, in, in the Water Department of Public Works. But without, let's say, a base of 35 to 40 million for Nagog Pond, we, we will run in major issues with our water, no matter what. And the rest is add-ons on top of it.
And you're the group that sets the rate for water?
Yes, yeah, yeah. And we have already a bit more than $10 million of reserves.
Yes.
So we draw that first. We already built in the last rate a buffer. So we increased the last rate a little bit higher than we needed to start building reserves. And I would anticipate the next hearing, I think it's the next or the second next meeting, we are already starting adjusting the, the rate in anticipation of this.
Okay.
He did bring that up.
If I can just make a suggestion.
Lois, send to the microphone. Is it up?
It is. If I can just make a suggestion, that's really useful information, particularly the fact that it's not only driven by the PFAS situation, the need for the, the funding comes from the fact that there isn't a surface water treatment. For the presentation at town meeting, if there is one, you might want to emphasize that a little bit more because I think that, that's an important factor that was, didn't come full, through fully.
Yeah, when he walked out, I talked with Alan, and already he mentioned that.
Good.
Yeah, I just want to add, one of the funding sources in the borrowing would be an SRF. I'm sure Alan would go for that. That's called State Revolving Fund. I have experience in a prior community where we did a project just like that. We did a PFAS treatment plant, and we actually had a, a good chunk of that was forgiven when you do an SRF loan. So just keep in mind, that would be something that we would pursue with this borrowing article.
Okay, good. Any other questions or comments? And, you know, I did forget on the previous one. Do we have members of the public still on? So anybody on Zoom that is a member of the public and wants to provide input before we vote, please raise your hand. Okay.
So, are we ready for a motion?
I will make a motion. Affirmative action on Article 17.
Second.
Seventeen Nagog Pond Improvements and PFAS Mitigation.
And I got a second.
You have a second.
So, do we want to call the roll?
We do.
We'll go, call the roll. Suresh?
Yeah.
Kathy Kukuloe?
Yes.
Eric Dahlberg?
Yes.
John Garof, no, you're not here. Okay, Don Kupka?
Yes.
Lindsay Lutz?
Yes.
Deortner, yes. Parashar Patel?
Yes.
Carlin Reed?
Aye.
Christine Reynolds?
Aye.
Lois Wasoff?
Yes.
It's unanimous.
Okay, and we now go to Article 19, Minuteman Regional Technical High School District Budget. Any comments, discussion, et cetera, that we would like to entertain?
I think, I, I'm not opposed to the, to the article. It's, we're a bit lucky this year because they had that big increase in Chapter 70 that they didn't expect. Our assessment is only up about 90 grand, so to me, it's not a big, a big deal. However, the picture there isn't great, right? In terms of, when you look at going forward, the, the costs are really going to start to rise. And I think, I don't know what conversation we should have with Steve about that, but I think for next year, or maybe. have with Steve about that, but I think for next year, or maybe in advance of that, we need to have a bigger discussion on what's going on with, with, with the school. And Lindsay asked a good question. I don't know that the committee really understands, Parashar, what our role is and how much ability. This is an assessment. It's not really a budget.
No, no.
Right? So that you want, you might want to talk to that or?
Might talk about it right now, yeah. I mean, at the end of the day, we don't really have a choice here.
Yeah, you sort of, you sort of don't.
This is indirect influence, basically.
Yeah.
Right? I mean.
We have a seat on the school committee.
Right.
And that's really our point of.
Steve, exactly. So, and I think the presentation was good, and it made sense, and all that stuff. I would have said that.
The, I think that the only choice we have is not in our control, but at the school level, if they said only 10 students could go, and then our assessment would be lower, I believe that that's how it would work. But otherwise, we don't really have a control. As, as the speaker was saying, it's between, our range is 12 to 15.
Right. Yeah, I think.
So we would have to drop our range if we wanted to reduce our costs, is the only thing I can think of.
Yeah. Well, I think you need, if two, they need a two-thirds vote or something like that of all the towns, and we're, we're a small potato in that, in that list of towns. So it's hard for, we're sort of in.
Right.
There isn't really an easy way out of it. You can either withdraw or keep paying the cost.
Yeah, and I'm not sure. I'm not sure we should withdraw.
No, I don't, I'm not advocating that. I'm just trying to make sure the committee understands it.
Yeah, but to both your points, I think, the, our participation in the freshman classes doubled in the last two years. So on that rolling basis, we will have another 50% increase in the next.
Or, actually, the thing is, while we don't have direct influence, right, we do have other towns. And I appreciated the metrics that they delivered in the full package, which, Anthony, we should for all the presenters, because I noticed some of the presenters had different slides than were in the packet. We should put the slides they presented up on the website.
They, they will. They'll replace the packet that's.
Yep, and that's good. But, but we should maybe have some conversations with some of the towns that are the larger towns, and get a sense of, hey, are you guys comfortable with the outcomes we're getting? Right? Because if they're not comfortable, then that's a basis to have a conversation, just like what we had with the Carlyle Finance Committee, who wasn't comfortable with the outcomes of the regional school district.
Yeah. I mean, I, I think Steve is our, is a real.
No, no, we, meaning Steve, is what I'm saying.
Yes, yeah, I do. Yeah, yeah, right. No, exactly. He's a really hard guy, yeah.
Yeah. Suresh, you have a hand up?
Yes, I think to answer D, I believe the change or the decrease will not be linear because there's also a fixed cost component of the total budget.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay. So I think we've had enough discussion. Can I get a motion?
Who wants to make a motion?
I move that we, that we vote for affirmative action. Thank you, on Article 19.
Second.
Okay. Roll call. Suresh?
Aye.
Kathy Kukuloe?
Yes.
Eric Dahlberg?
Yes.
Don Kupka?
Aye.
Lindsay Litt?
Yes.
Deortner, yes. Parashar Patel?
Yes.
Carlin Reed?
Aye.
Chris Reynolds?
Yes.
Lois Wasaw?
Yes.
Unanimous, again.
Excellent. So now we go to the Solar Task Force, Article 33.
I think we should hold on this one until the light, the light board gives it, gives their vote on it.
Absolutely, yeah.
When, when does that happen? Do you know?
Second Wednesday of April.
So it'll be a little.
So that'll be after our report.
Oh, so we'll have to defer.
The second. Vote at town meeting then.
Wednesday of April.
Well, we, we would defer until.
Kathy, just vote, assuming that it's going forward? I mean.
It's none of.
I don't think it's.
Kathy, it's not a fair assumption.
Well, we can, then we can just hold our recommendation until town.
Yeah, so we'll defer it for now, right?
That's what I would do.
Well, not just for now.
Not for now.
I think in the report, it just saw a note that we are deferring until we have further information.
All I said is we're deferring it.
Okay, permanently, though, is what I'm saying. Until we get to town meeting.
Yeah, when you're doing the report, D, the report will reflect that we have deferred until.
Town meeting.
Right.
That's what I was saying.
Fair enough.
Okay. Okay. So we don't need a motion on that, right?
No.
Okay, good.
No, I don't think so. And last one is the Article 40, Community Preservation Appropriation Recommendations.
Okay, who wants to leave that discussion?
Parashar?
Yeah.
Given the hour.
Do we want to?
And Tuesday's hearing is likely to be shorter. Should we defer this to our Tuesday?
I don't, I do not mind deferring at all, to be perfectly honest. We could try Tuesday. Otherwise, we will have a relatively light Thursday.
Right, exactly.
Next Thursday. So I don't mind that at all, the rest of the committee.
So we're, we're going to defer this until Tuesday? Okay.
We'll try Tuesday, if not Thursday.
What's today? Today's Tuesday, for a week?
No, no, we're going to.
Sorry, I screwed up. Sorry.
Thursday.
So Thursday, we have a public hearing again, which may or may not be light. We'll see, because those are the enterprise votes.
Right.
So if we want to make it light, hint, hint among all of us, we can do that. But if, if not, following Thursday on the 28th is our regularly scheduled meeting.
Okay.
That one will probably be light because hopefully we'll have gone through most of the articles.
Yep.
And we can discuss CPC.
That's fine.
That Thursday.
Yeah, that's fine.
And that gives us the advantage of also waiting for those questions.
Yep, yes.
Twenty-first?
Twenty-first or 28th.
We defer.
Twenty-first or 28th. Okay. Any, Suresh, Kathy, you guys heard that plan? Okay with it, or any objections?
No, no.
Okay. And, remember, oh, wait, you have a question?
No.
Oh, yeah, no. Terry, go ahead.
Thank you. This might be out of order.
Name rank and serial number, sorry.
Okay, okay. Terry Ackman, Select Board. I'm not speaking for the board, but I'm the liaison. And because of the problems of the last meeting, I could not get back on to hear what your positions were, if you took any on, if you could just tell me real quick, I think it started with 14, maybe?
Yeah. Let me tell you. So 14, we decided to hold until we have further clarity on exactly the level of free cash. What's the next one?
I think, I don't know. Y'all tell me, in 16, maybe?
16 is next week, the enterprise.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Fund. Or not next week, sorry, Thursday. It's Thursday, the 21st.
You guys probably have a better list than I do.
Yeah, keep going. Is there, or I can share this with you when you.
Let me see. Maybe it's right over here.
We have the.
Terry, we, yeah, we took votes on three, seven, eight.
Terry, I'll send you the list that I have.
That sounds great.
Perfect.
I've got a list. It's got your recommendations also, so I'll send that to you.
Okay, great.
It's also in the packet.
Yeah, Terry, it's the very last page.
Yeah, we're about to vote on those minutes, Terry.
Okay. So I'm going to turn it over to D, the clerk.
Okay, so we have the minutes. And I have received comments from two people on both sets of the minutes. What I would like to suggest is that the March 7th meeting, we will have the final version of that for Thursday. And the March 24th, I'll try to get that done as well. But if anyone else has any comments, please email them to me by tomorrow. All right? Otherwise, I have some comments. I'll make the corrections, and then we'll be ready to go on Thursday. Okay?
Sounds good.
Okay.
And is that it for minutes? Correspondence, we didn't have any, I'm assuming?
Nope.
One letter, oh.
One letter from Keith Bergman, which he was referencing.
Oh, that letter, yeah, okay, fair enough.
Parashar, I have a question for you. When are we going to see the enterprise booklets? The enterprise books?
I don't know.
No idea.
We're working on it.
It's ready. We have our hearing on Thursday.
We're not going to have it for Thursday. Just like we didn't have the budget book for the 7th.
Are we going to have presentations on Thursday?
Yeah, presentations on Thursday. So you'll have updated presentations in your packet that'll be sent out.
Wednesday.
Wednesday.
Okay. And do we have time for Thursday, to tweak the agenda for Thursday, or are we out of time?
The agenda, we're out of time. What are you trying to, what do you want?
Well, what I wanted to do is add one agenda item for organization for next year's committee. We have to have a nominating committee. And I'd like, sorry?
Can we defer that to the 28th?
We can defer it to the 28th. So let's make sure we get that on that agenda. I thought if we could do it for Thursday, we could do it. But we can wait till Thursday. Okay.